You, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
All right, let me get, let me get them seated. We're, we're fine. Let's see which pair of glasses, all right. It's called the November the 12th, 2024, meeting Commissioner Leighton together. Appreciate y'all being here. And Paul's okay. We've already doctored him up. He's got a little bit of a croup here, but he's A-OK. We met today.
On contagious.
Microphone, oh yeah, here I am to... Hey, can you hear me? All right. Again, I want to thank you for being here and we'll go ahead and get started. Anything else out there, Sheriff?
No, sir.
All right, let me get my these Walmarts on. Just so far as announcement piece, we've got a, two items for announcements. I'm gonna start with B, under, to be, the annual presentation of employee service awards and reception will be held on Monday, December the 2nd, 2024, at 5:00 PM in the Commissioner's Boardroom. That's where you are. Also, on that date, a special meeting will be held on Monday, December the 2nd, 2024, at 6:00 PM in the Commissioner's Boardroom, in accordance with North Carolina GS 153-826, for newly elected officials to take and subscribe the oath of office, and accordance with the North Carolina GS 153-839, for the Board of Commissioners to choose a chairman and vice chairman at that time. That'd be on December the 2nd. We'll go ahead at this time and have a moment of silence. If you join with me, I pledge allegiance. Join with me, I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's see. Public hearings, none for tonight. Public comment, period. Let me just remind everybody a little bit. You have five minutes in your public comment. We'll read you one little thing here. We talked about here that anyone who's called on to speak, or you got your name up here, if you act out of accordance with good manners, and you're directed by, leave the meeting for your verbiage, or what it may be that's inappropriate, you will rightfully interrupt the, or disturb this meeting. Any person who fails to lead the meeting after being directed to do so by the chairman shall be removed by the sheriff or Jonathan, deputy, and charged with a misdemeanor pursuant to GS 143-138, 1318-17. And just a little reminder, we work on the idea that manners are appropriate. If you wanna, when you address the board, dress all of us. We don't do singletons. And also, if you're addressing the board, don't turn around and start addressing the, the audience there. Stay on, stay on contact with us. And we'll, we'll get along just fine. At this time, Matt Hollins, where you at, Matt?
Right here.
Wait a minute. All right, go ahead.
I wanna thank you guys for letting me speak tonight. I'm gonna keep it very short because I hate public speaking. But I wanted to say I'm against any of the changes to the library. I think there's rules in place that are, that protect the children already. So I think the way it is, you know, don't, you know, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, kinda thing, so. Just wanted to say that. So, thank you guys for hearing me out.
Thank you, Matt. Scott Mase, where's Scott? There you go.
Hey, guys.
Hey, Scott.
Mostly guys, anyway.
Where's your wife?
She'll be here momentarily. She's running a little behind tonight. She's taking a class at the college, so she, they had to, had to meet tonight. But thank y'all for letting us speak tonight. I had two, two things I wanted to bring up. One, encouraging y'all to sign this library deal. We've already got signatures from Swain County and, and Jackson County. So all we gotta do is put Macon County on there and let's get this done for the next 10 years. We didn't get everything we asked for, but I think we got a lot. And I think the changes they made to what we asked for, pretty reasonable. So I think we can, we can move ahead with this and get this back behind us. The other one is the matter that's coming up tonight about waiving building fee, building inspection fees. I looked up on the, the fee schedule in the county, and a 3,000 square foot house is about a thousand, a little, $1,100, let's say. Round, round figure, $1,100 on the cost of a 3,000 square foot house, which is less than a bundle of tuba fours. Now, we're talking about waiving this fee to people as an, as a gift, but, but really what we're doing is we're saying the taxpayers are gonna now pay this fee. And so, as, as good stewards of the taxpayers' money, I think it doesn't beho, it's not a good investment of our money. I think a better investment of our money would be to take that same amount of money that we were gonna give to the builders and give to the teachers. Teachers need more money, and maybe that'll keep a teacher around a little longer. Maybe that'll, you know, help them out with their income and they'll say, oh, maybe, maybe I'm teaching in another county, but there's better opportunity in Macon County. Maybe we can get some better teachers to come to our county. So that was all it was.
Thank you, Scott. Christopher Baxter. Hey, Chris.
Hello. I'm kind of new to y'all, but I've been living in Macon County for the last 10 years. Really love living here. And I'm here tonight to address the whole topic of the floodplain ordinance. So I have a couple of notes I've made. I see that growing public opinion in Macon County is against weakening flood protection at a time when our neighbors are still struggling to recover. I looked today, and as November 8th, as of November 8th, Asheville is still on a boil water alert. And they're hopeful that they'll get their water back to normal by sometime in early December. So my feeling with this is, looking at how things are happening, it's not a question of if, but it's a question of when we're going to also be subject to storms that are out of our control. So on behalf of that, I wanna make a few comments about what has been presented in some of the public, public meetings preceding this, including the planning board meeting that was last Sunday. As I've observed, everyone who has spoken here is against this ordinance, except for two speakers who I heard, one of whom had already been fined under the existing ordinance for illegal fill. I thought that was an interesting thing. When asked for a show of hands at a previous commission meeting, nearly everyone of almost 100 in the room were against the ordinance. Our representative and Senator, our representative and Senator in Raleigh, Carl Gillespie and Kevin Corbin are against this ordinance. The town of Franklin is against this ordinance. The fire marshal, who coordinates emergency and non-emergency local, state, and federal assistance for Macon County during times of disaster, is against this ordinance. Every one of the credentialed, knowledgeable, unpaid scientists who have studied this proposal and spoken to us about it are against this ordinance. I have not heard any expert speak on behalf of this ordinance. So with that in mind, I then have a concern about the democratic process that's going on here, and how the decision is really being made. As I understand democracy, we have majority rule and we have minority rights. In this case, as I've been going, I think to, maybe this is perhaps my fifth meeting, the overwhelming majority of the people in this room have respectfully, but repeatedly and intelligently, as very concerned citizens, spoken out against this change. In this democratic process, the voice and will of the people are to be listened to, respected, and responded to. The voice of the people has been heard here, but I don't believe that it has been responded to in a way that's commensurate with how they have been expressing their concerns, because the issue continues to need airing. So I'm left thinking, are there any benefits to the people of Macon County to passing this legislation? And since almost no one in the room that has spoken thinks there are any benefits, then someone has to be the beneficiary here, or this whole issue wouldn't even be happening. So the question that I have is, who's benefiting from this change? Since everyone I've heard speak about it has claimed that it's going to be to their disadvantage, including all the list of people who I just named here. So with this in mind, I've, I've not, I've not heard anyone even step forward to claim that they're going to benefit from this change. So what's the point? If nobody's claiming they're gonna benefit from it, and all the experts and citizens of Macon County are saying they don't want this, what's, I don't get it. Please help me understand this. So if there's someone who will benefit from this, and there, can their benefit be evaluated in balance with the benefit to the citizens of Macon County? To see what the balance might be, because we do have minority rights that we need to acknowledge. But if there's no even acknowledgement of benefits received by any one or any group, what's the point? Why are we doing this? And, and is there some hidden benefit going, you know? It's just, it leaves a question in my mind, and I think many people's minds. So that's, that's how I understand democracy works, so thank you for listening.
Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see, I may need to ask if there's anybody else. Do I need to ask if anybody else got something? Any further comments? Okay, any additions to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Unless our attorney tells us different, I believe we can remove item 11F, as in Frank, discussion and consideration of offer to purchase property. I don't believe we have actually received all the documentation we need on that.
Agreed. Level that, level now.
Yes.
Any, any more adjustments or anything?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, under the old business, just give this board and the citizens an update on the discussions for Highland School Soccer field. We had a meeting with folks up there. I'd just like to give you all an update on that.
John, where does that go? Where you putting that?
That would be, that would be 10H, I guess, under old business.
And what was that again, the Highland Soccer?
Highland School Soccer. And I'm not sure its next item, if it would be under new business or old business. It's sort of pertaining to the floodplain ordinance and also I would like to see if the new part is actually be discussed by this board. As Commissioner Higgins had brought up before, about the removal of Lake Emery. And so I'd like to, if we pass the planning board at this.
If you want to look at it.
So that would be.
The new business.
I guess new business under 11H.
And I'm just gonna put, Lake Emery. Anything else? Motion approved the agenda.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second.
All in agreement, raise your hand. Thank you. Oh, yes, I'm just one of those people. I need to get closer to it. Keep fussing at me, and I will.
I'm sorry.
What's yours on, John?
Well, usually everybody can hear me, so.
Okay, yes, sir.
We just added something to the agenda, and I'd love to speak public comment on. And everyone on the agenda, so we don't have a chance to speak public comment on it. I don't think that's, that's a big deal, taking out that dam.
Yeah, yes, and I don't think you're taking it a long ways, are you?
No, I just think that through the, the discussion of this removal of the dam, to task the planning board at what's involved, and what would be the benefits of removal of the dam, because in January, we're gonna be dealing with this floodplain issue. And I think the removal of that dam, if it is possible, and pros outweigh the cons, then it would solve all of the floodplain and floodway on the Colosseia River and Little Tennessee River.
Can I ask a question? The dam is actually owned privately.
That's correct.
It's in the middle of the sale.
Yeah, how we got to this topic, Scott, is, we're talking about.
I was here when you proposed it that night.
If you're gonna look at, if you're gonna look at a floodplain study, or the Little Tennessee River, that's what drains the whole county, is rather than doing piecemeal approaches to floodplain this, et cetera, et cetera, do a comprehensive study of the Little Tennessee River. And it may not be feasible, it may not be practical, to even have a discussion about removal or leaving the little, the, the dam, Lake Emery Dam. You never know when you throw it out. And I've talked with, and I hate to name drop, but Bill McFarney and I, we've discussed this. He hoped it'd never come up, because he lives down below the dam. But if we're gonna do a comprehensive study of the flow of the Little Tennessee River, I think it's, it behooves us to do a complete study. And we may get to base one on this thing and realize, hey, this is not, we knew it was privately owned. And it is a generating plant, as opposed to the one in Dillard, was not a generating plant, as I understand. Or in Dillsborough, I mean. So it may be, it may be a mute point, but we never know, we breach the topic. And that was where John and I, we talked about it. And I personally, as an environmentalist, and my degrees are environmental health sciences, I think it would be a great boost to this area if we had a free-flowing stream through downtown. But now, that's all within the city limits of Franklin, so we as a Board of Commissioners can't go say, hey, we're gonna do this. It's going to take a broad study, not something to do in a six-month period.
There'll be time for public comment.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's got, all, all shareholders should be involved. Downstream residents, upstream, the town of Franklin, and, and certainly Bill McFarney. He's our aquatic hydrologist in this area. But anyway, that's where it's at. We're not saying, hey, we're gonna take the dam out. We're just, I think it, I think it would be great if we had a, a complete study of the flow of the Little Tennessee River through Macon County. And that's how we got to this point.
Thank you.
And, and Scott, another thing is, with all the flooding and everything that's going on, or had, with all the FEMA, Army Corps of Engineers, and all that, this may be a great time to, and that's all it is, it was a discussion.
We talked a lot of good for Dillsborough, all right? Revitalize their downtown and everything.
Yeah, so.
They still got flooded.
Maybe a good thing.
Yeah, we never know when we.
I thought tonight we were talking about taking the dam out. That's what it sounded like when you first.
Well, just an advisory, hand it down to them, yeah.
I got a track of.
Did he have, you were promised that you would go ahead and listen to the experts that weigh in?
I won't be here, John.
Well, it's, it's a big ball of a set in order and not leak, and take off.
It's not an order, it's just simply, it's just simply something that I think needs to be, needs to be reviewed.
You do promise, though, to the rest of you, would you be so kind as to promise to show up to when the experts speak?
I think when they.
At least, please.
In January, we'll have our groups to present. And I'll be meeting with Mr. McFarney for any other questions we have with his group. And there's a lot of time and energy put into this, and we definitely don't want to ignore any, any of those type things. But it's working out there. We've got it set up for January, and we'll, we'll keep moving on to that. But somewhere along the line, I think the, the Lake Emery Dam will be a conversation piece. And, but we'll, we'll make sure it's on the agenda, and we all get a opportunity to speak for, against, or don't care.
The Lake Emery, the silk catchment function that it performs does protect biodiversity, that attracts your tourism, and that would be a big asset in county. Proper study, something gets damaged like this, and those muscles are very, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see.
Thank, thank y'all for, now I'm just.
Thanks, Scott. Are we putting it, are we, we already.
Well, we've sort of discussed it, but, but I think we're still gonna have to get to that point in either an up or down vote to pass the planning board with a study for this process. I'm not sa, I mean, it's gonna take a long time. It's not something that will be ready in January for this.
Discussion will be.
Right.
Yeah. All right, keep it moving. Macon County Housing Study Presentation. Patrick, it's good to see you come up to the President of Bowen National Research.
So for everybody, again, Patrick Bowen, President of Bowen National Research. We do real estate market research, housing needs assessments all over the country. In fact, we just issued last week to the North Carolina Chamber of Commerce a statewide housing needs assessment. I don't know when they're gonna make that public, but hopefully you'll, your study is much more comprehensive, because we get deep in the weeds in some of the data points here. So if you could bring that up, or do I bring that up, or? So I was told I have about 15 minutes. Keep in mind, there's a lot that we did. I'm gonna try to hustle on this, so I may go a little fast. Certainly, I'll answer any questions that you have for me at the end.
You may have to use the up and down keys on that computer.
Let's do that. Okay, so we were asked to cover a lot of topics as part of this housing needs assessment. Demographics, economic information. Obviously, it's a housing needs assessment, so we studied housing. Then we covered a lot of other topics we list under other housing factors. So whether it's your public transit, community services, residential blight, development opportunities, meaning sites, development costs, government regulations, developer, investor identification, house, housing program identification, special needs populations, so homeless, disabled, and so forth. I won't cover hardly any of those tonight, just based on the time that I have. Key part, though, besides the housing supply, is the housing gaps. What is your needs? What's the gaps, shortage of housing, whether it's rental or for sale? So I'll cover that. We got a lot of great community engagement, whether it's stakeholders, employers, or the residents and commuters. And then we have some recommended housing strategies. All right, so the focus was Macon County, but we were asked to cut up the county and a couple other areas. But most of tonight, I'm gonna talk about the county as a whole, given your roles here in the county. But we also looked at Franklin, and then its, its little surrounding area that goes around it, the Franklin ETJ, Highlands Flats area, which is that whole southeast corner, so it's not just Highlands itself. And then the balance of Macon County. And I know for the audience, it's probably tough to see, but hopefully on your screens you're okay. Whole point here, housing, household growth. We have a lot of population information in the study, but for a housing needs assessment, I focus in on household growth. So you are growing, as the line graph shows. You're expected to add roughly 500, over 500 households, 548 households over that five-year period of 2023, 2028. So you've got a lot of growth that's been happening. You're gonna have growth continue to come to the area. That's gonna drive part of your housing needs in the future at a pace that's just slightly below the state average, but still really positive growth. All right, this is households by age group. Macon County on the top, North Carolina on the bottom, as a point of reference. So we break it out by different age groups, different points of time, 2020, 2023, and 2028. The takeaway here is, the two areas you're gonna grow over the net, the five-year projection period is those between the ages of 35 and 44, and then also anybody aged 65 and older. So that's a, that's a national trend. You have the older millennials kind of sweeping through the nation, and then you got the baby boomers. So Macon County is no different, but that will affect your housing needs. How about households by income? This is renter households. Macon County on the top, North Carolina on the bottom. Again, those three points in time, the big takeaways here is, you've got a lot of lower-income renter households making less than $40,000. It's almost 60% of your renters. But on the bottom right, again, just sticking with the Macon County part of that table, you've got most of your growth is gonna be among those that make between $60,000 and $99,000. So you've got a large base of lower-income households, and I'll show you what's available, or in this case, not available to them, and the waitlist to try to get into affordable housing. But a lot of your growth is among those moderate to higher-income households. That's gonna drive demand for rental product, higher-end rental product in the years ahead. You have the same thing, this is owner households. Where is the growth expected? It's really among those that make over $100,000 over this five-year projection period. So I know this county has a lot of higher-priced homes, and I'll show you what that is here in a moment. But you are gonna have phenomenal growth among higher-income owner households. You also have some growth among those that make over $40,000 a year. Also, again, you have a lot of renters that at some point are gonna wanna become homeowners. So that all plays into this, but certainly anticipated growth among owner households will affect what kind of housing you'll need in the near future. And here's one of the things that I point out, a lot of firms don't look at, but I wanna look at who is commuting in here. And so this is showing you how many people commute into the county every day for work. You have almost 4,000 people daily that do not live in this county, but they work here. And they make up just over a third of your, your workers here in the county. So a lot of people coming in. Now, there'll be reasons why people don't choose to live in a particular town, or a county, or taxes, schools, whatever it might be. But I will tell you this, it, housing does play a role. And when I show you, you all kind of know a lot of stuff I'm gonna share with you. You don't have a lot of housing that's available to, to, whether it's a renter or a home buyer. But I will tell you this, when you have a lot of people that are commuting into an area, they will choose to live in that area if housing is available. We didn't do, no, we actually, we did. We did survey that here in the county. But when we do this survey in other markets, typically about 40% of people that commute into a county wanna live in that county if housing's available and affordable to them. But like many counties in North Carolina and around the United States, there's not a lot available here in this county for people to choose. And so that is limiting your, you have a, you actually have a, you're growing a lot. You have an opportunity and potential to grow much, much more. And these commuters would pay, play part of that role. So who are these commuters? About half of them, between the ages of 30 and 54, and almost 40% of make over $40,000 a year. All right, so we surveyed multifamily apartments, just the bigger multifamily apartments in the area. Eight of them, 316 units, zero vacant. So this is where our staff actually talk to property management companies, or to leasing agents at these properties. Nothing is available. That is, now again, that's not a big inventory of housing. But I'll tell you this, that is incredibly rare, that we find a market where we can't find anything available to rent among the apartments. Here are those apartments that we surveyed, and I circled on there, in the red there, the waitlist. So HH means households. And it's over 300 households, if you take all those, those waitlists combined. So a lot of pent-up demand, whether, and you see on the right-hand side, it's family or senior households. We have the different kind of income levels, that's what those. That's what those percentages mean. It's percent of median income for this area. So it's moderate to lower-income households, significant pent-up demand for affordable rentals. All right, so if you can't rent an apartment, what else can you rent? We call those non-conventional rentals. That'd be a house, mobile home, a duplex, a unit over a storefront. You have about 3,800 of those across the county. That actually makes up almost 85% of your rental. So most of your rental stock is this, not apartments. And so that makes up a bulk of the rental housing stock. My staff is really good at what they do. They, they make a lot of phone calls, do a lot of online research. They spent months trying to find are any of these available. We found seven countywide. So if I take those seven and divide it by that 3,800 non-conventional rentals you have, you have a vacancy rate of two tenths of a percent. So you had nothing for the multifamily apartments. You have two tenths of a percent for these non-conventional rentals. That's good for property owners, investors of real estate. This is not good for the community. You normally want that to be about four, six percent vacant. You want vacancies for a healthy market because people get married, have kids, all kind of changes in life. They need housing to be available. And all that household growth I showed you coming to this area, people are going to want to relocate here. Where will they relocate if they want rentals? So that is a major challenge for this area in terms of growth potential and economic opportunities. How about your for-sale market? We, we hear this on the news all the time. Macon County is no different. So that graph there, you see, the blue bars are the number of homes that were sold every year from 2020 up to 2024. In 2024, we had about a half of the year's worth of sales, so we projected out for the rest of the year. So you can see where that starts to decline from 2021 and down. So that was kind of normal. We're seeing it around the country as interest rates climbed, construction costs climbed, home prices climbed. We started to see a slowing of home sales. So Macon County is no different. The green line is your median sales price. It was at $250,000 back in 2020. By 2023, it was up to 334. And people hear that, right? Everybody's probably talking about this escalation of home prices. Now, it did slow down here in the county here in 2024, but nonetheless, if you take the price in 2020 up to 2024, it's increased by 33%. What is that? $55,000? So you can see home prices are, they're, they're so high and been escalating. They're far outpacing wages. So that makes it difficult for folks to be able to afford housing. I'll show you what is available to buy. All right, this is home prices of what is available to purchase across the county. We broke it out by Franklin Highlands Flats area, balanced the county, which is basically anything out of those two other geographies, and then Macon County. I marked in the yellow there what, where the bulk of the homes are available to purchase, and most of those are over $400,000. Two-thirds of all homes available to purchase are priced over $400,000. Go the other way, look at the homes that are priced under 200,000. So be first-time home buyers typically, more affordable. You have 17 countywide, less than 10% of your housing stock. You're not alone. We are seeing that in markets after market here in North Carolina and throughout the United States. A very small supply of what will be classified as affordable for-sale housing. So the other thing to point out at the very bottom right, again, the audience might not be able to see that, they, on the right-hand side, 1.4%, that's an availability rate. So just like we do vacancies for apartments or non-conventional rentals, when we take the available supply of 179 homes and divide that by all owner-occupied households, what is that availability rate? 1.4%. Is that good? Is that bad? You normally want to be, again, for a healthy market, between 2% and 3%. You're well below that. And Franklin in itself is at seven tenths of percent. Now, the difference here is Highlands. They're at 6%. They've got a lot of that super-high-end product that's actually kind of inflating the county's numbers. If I took those out, the whole county itself, I'm sorry, the rest of the county, has got a much lower availability rate. So shortage of housing, particularly for those that want to try to find something under $200,000. Again, probably no surprise to most of the people in this room. All right, so when you don't have a lot of availability, what happens? There's two things. I marked them in red. So one is when people don't have housing to move into that they can afford, because there's not much available to them, they often will have to live in substandard housing. It's a federal definition, so it's either overcrowded housing units or units that don't have complete indoor plumbing or kitchen facilities. So believe it or not, around the United States and here in Macon County, you have people living in substandard housing, 322 households. The other one I put at the bottom there, again, because that's, they don't have anything else to choose from, so they, they're forced to take these substandard housing units. Well, the bottom part is showing people that are severe housing cost burden. What that means, those are people that pay over 50% of their income towards housing. Imagine that, you're spending more than half of your income towards housing. A healthy rate should be about 30, less than 30%. People are paying over half their income, 1,900 of those across the county. So you can see that people are struggling financially with their housing costs. All right, so this is a big topic I know in this area, seasonal recreational housing. The top graph is showing you the shares by every, every one of the study areas that we did, Macon County on the far right. The light blue is 2010, dark blue is 2020. And this, this is anything that's either a second home, or it could be short-term rentals like VRBO, Airbnb, stuff like that. But that's that whole universe of any type of basically non-permanent resident housing. And it stayed pretty steady in all these markets. If anything, it's declined proportionately. Again, these are the shares of these units relative to all the housing. But the bottom graph is probably maybe more telling. And that is, again, seasonal housing, but that is just VRBO or Airbnb. So the short-term weekend stays, one-week stays or whatever, and that continues to climb year over year in this area. So it's becoming a bigger and bigger influence in terms of the number of these short-term rentals. And if any person in this audience behind me can read those tables, they have exceptional eyesight. Again, the study, you'll, you'll see this table clearly and hopefully on your screens you could see it. The top right is showing you basically the role that, that tourism plays in this county. It's a, a major influence, over $350 million in revenue for the county in terms of expenditures, and it's growing at 3.8%. That was the highest of the five or six counties, six counties that we looked at in this region. Over 1,700 people are considered short-term, I'm sorry, seasonal workers in the tourism-related industries. So things that you know, tourism plays a big role, short, these, these tourism-related occupations play a big role. Again, for the audiences, it'd be tough for them to see, but for you all here on your screens, this is probably, to me, maybe one of the most telling pieces of this whole study. So this is the workforce tied specifically to tourism industry. And what we did was we looked at their wages, median wages are in there, and then we showed on the far two right columns there, rents that they can afford to pay, or the home prices they can afford to purchase. Anything in red is saying those particular workers, based on their incomes, if it's red, it doesn't exist. You don't have that. And so the point of that table is to basically illustrate to you your workforce, particularly this case, and I do show the whole workforce in it in total, but I just wanted to show the tourism piece itself. But if I showed the whole, the whole county's workforce, it would be much like this. It's all, a lot of red in terms of what can people afford to rent or what can they afford to buy. So for your workforce, this is a major challenge. This is an economic challenge for this area. We know that a lot of people can't sustain this and would be difficult for them to do. So affordable workforce housing obviously would play a role, important role in this future of Macon County's economy. Other things we looked at, residential blight, it wasn't very much here. We only looked in this area and then over towards the Highlands area. 23 of them, they were all located here in Franklin. It's not a lot, but relative to the, all the households you have, it's still that seven tenths of the market. So should blight, should removing or repairing housing be a priority? At least you have some sense of how big of a role that plays here in the county. We identified 40 sites across the county, so we have details on those. In the study, we list those properties. So this would be, again, if you're trying to think about how do you promote opportunities for residential development, this would be one of those things that you could do. Identified over 50 development, potential development partners. So whether these are nonprofit groups, developers, lenders, other, not, other groups that might, again, they're not all listed there. I just wanted to show you an example. But you have a lot of development partners that you could reach out to. There's a lot of housing programs we identified, 60 of them, whether they're federal, state, or local. Then we learned from, and this is just some of the highlights from community stakeholders and employers, the, the actual questions we asked, the results we got are much more involved than what I show here. But what are stakeholders? And again, stakeholders would be folks like yourselves, other community leaders. What were stakeholders saying that was needed? Rentals of under 1,250 a month or for-sale housing under 200,000, followed by the 200 to 300. So that housing segments I showed you, you don't have, the stakeholders are saying that's what we need. What kind of housing? Multifamily apartments, duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, resident housing issues. Limited availability, rent and home purchase affordability. So again, echoing all the stuff I'm showing you, the stakeholders are saying those are the same challenges. Employers, this is, to me, is fascinating. We've been doing these surveys on employers at a greater degree since COVID hit because we started to hear from economic development groups, employers, saying what does housing mean, means to them and their business? So we asked them a bunch of questions. Some of the key highlights were there are challenges that their employees face, or long commutes over 30 miles each way. Short-term rental housing is a major housing product that's needed for the, again, the seasonal workforce. They listed the type of rents. And then the third bullet point, is housing having some kind of impact on the employer? And the answer is yes. And that, those issues that they're telling us is they're having difficulty attracting employees, retaining employees, and unable to grow and expand their business. This is becoming a common trend. When I did ask these questions in 2020 of different communities, housing wasn't really on the radar of a lot of employers. And every year that we do this, it keeps climbing and climbing. So employers now are starting to feel the squeeze. Macon County is no different with your employers. We asked employers if they'd hire more if local housing issues were resolved, so for economic development objectives. 58% of the employers said, yeah, I'd hire more if we could solve our local housing issues. And then, and I'll just skip the last one. And how about the residents? We surveyed, I think, more than 750 residents across the county, and a lot of these answers were the same thing the stakeholders told us, the same data that I was showing you. Rental housing that's affordable, less than $1,000 a month, home prices under $200,000 a month, older millennials, the 25 to 40 age groups, seniors, independent living. What kind of issues that residents are going through, mismatch between local jobs, wages, and housing costs. I showed you that, at least for the seasonal workforce. High prices of rents, lack of rental vacancies, housing getting converted into short-term vacation rentals, excessive rising utility costs. So you can see the, the constant message, whether it was the data that we had, what we showed you with the demographics or the housing supply, the stakeholders, the employers, and now even the residents and commuters. One of the things, we didn't survey a lot of non-residents in Macon County. It was like three dozen or so. But we asked them this question, and this is probably the highest rate I've ever received. Again, keep in mind, it's only about three dozen. We asked them, would you move to Macon County if housing was available, affordable? And almost 80% of them said yes. Normally, that's like 40, 40% or so, 40 or 50. So you can see there's a significant level of interest of folks to live here. All right, last few slides here. This is the housing gaps. This is rentals first. We broke it out by different price ranges, so you even have the incomes and then the corresponding rents. But this is showing you how many housing units are needed by these different ranges. We have 629 units would be needed if you wanted to solve all issues. So that means accounting for growth, accounting for some of those commuters, getting some of those people out of substandard housing, some of those people that are living in severe housing cost situations. If you want to solve it all, the gap is 629. The greatest gap is for those rentals at 19, about $900 to about $1,400, almost $1,500 a month. But it's really across the whole spectrum of rental housing. We did the same thing for for-sale, 14, almost 1,500 units needed countywide. Where is the greatest need? It's really basically anything priced at 195 or higher. But again, some of these lower-priced segments obviously need housing as well. And then just recommendations, there's a lot of things, we have a lot of details in the study, but just on a high level. You now have these housing gap estimates, so you have some idea of the need, whether it's rentals or for-sale, at all these price levels. So you have a, a starting point to figure out where should the focus be? And that's not even just for new housing. It's also for, again, that substandard housing that you have. Should we focus in on renovating or repairing, helping some homeowners get their homes up to modern-day living standards? You have a lot of different policies on the local level. The municipalities certainly can do some things, but you all could do something here in the countywide. Senior-oriented housing is needed. You saw those projections for senior household growth. Tonight is part of that formulating education outreach campaign to support local housing initiatives, educating the public, letting people know, decision-makers like yourself, what kind of housing is needed. There's development partners I showed you that you could reach out to. There's marketing opportunities to promote what can be done in the needs for housing. So I can certainly give you some guidance on that if that's something you want to talk about. And then I put this on, this bullet point at the top about educating and, and job training. And so when I looked at your workforce here, the, those that are in the construction trade industries, you're actually close to what the state average is. If anything, you have a little bit more. But I actually, earlier this morning, I was like, I was like, wow, that's a little bit surprising because a lot of rural markets that I go into, there's a, there's a challenge with getting people in the construction trades. When I looked at really close, those that are in plumbing, electricians, roofers, you have a really low share of those, those skilled, trained workers. So you have others that support those kind of workers, but not those skilled workers. So if you think about how do we solve some of our affordability issues, you want the workforce locally here because you know this, but me driving out here, this is not easy to get out here, right? It's a, it's a tough time, even from Highlands over here. That is not easy. But think about getting materials, workers out here. If you're hiring a contractor closer towards Asheville or something like that, you can imagine that adds to cost. That makes it tougher for anybody to do affordable housing. So just something I put in here, I don't do that that often because I, you know, education isn't housing, but I think it can be. In this case, it's helped solve part of the problem. Then I mentioned marketing to potential developers and others. And that is it. I know that's a lot, but if you actually read the study, it's probably about 250 pages, so there's a lot in there. There's a lot that I didn't cover tonight. But this is a really, I think, a comprehensive study that I think could be a great tool, whether, again, it's for you, you all, or if the citizens themselves. But I think as well as trying to get developers in here that help solve some of your housing issues and all those development partners that we listed in the study, I think there's opportunities to start to solve some of this stuff. It feels daunting at times, but it can be done.
Do you have any examples of where it has been done?
Well, I'll, I'll take the closest to you. And I'm not saying it's a model. I'm just saying as an example to start. And I can give you a bunch of cities and communities. But Asheville has been really progressive. And so whether that in any way matches what you all want to do here, but Asheville's come up with a lot of different ways to try to incentivize development and think about encouraging developers for certain housing that I think Asheville felt was critical to their community. So there are a lot of examples. That's the good news. I mean, the nation's going through a major housing crisis, so the good news is there's a lot of roadmaps out there. And there's a lot of organizations, and I could, I don't think I put it in the study, but I can give you links to organizations that they give you the toolbox, basically, of all the things you can do. We cite some of them in the study. It's just to get you to start to think, but really, I could do a two-hour presentation, if not longer, on just all the possibilities that are out there. But what fits this community, what fits the county versus Franklin versus Highlands, probably a little bit different between all of you, but you got to come up with some kind of, I think, plan to start addressing housing. Because hopefully, if I did my job right tonight, and I did it right in the study, to me, again, I'm not advocating for anything, but I, I do think economic health and viability of any community, Macon is no, no different. You really need to think about housing. And employers are telling us that from the surveys, not just yours, but other ones, economic development groups. We actually have more economic development groups hire us now than I do cities or counties or anybody else because economic development is hearing from employers and saying, like, we got to do something because our employers are feeling this, and so we need to take[1682.61] we got to do something because our employers are feeling this, and so we need to take action. So they start with assessing their housing markets.
I know you had a couple of minutes with my friend Steve Grissom that I introduced you there to. I'm going to have Steve probably come in January or in the project that he's in. I don't know how far you've gotten your topic there. Did you encourage him?
I've never met him until tonight, so when you introduce me, no.
Have you all had a quick dialogue of what he was?
No, I mean, hopefully, no, I didn't talk about any specifics when I met him, but I think when he's, hopefully, he sees these numbers, he should find comfort, like there is a need for the kind of product. Again, I know a little bit of what he's contemplating. And so I immediately looked at my study, I was like, what did he say about that segment? And there's a, there's a huge need for what his product is.
He does have this of yours. I sent it to him the other day. He's one of our people that's looking forward to getting involved in developing more housing. And so I think he'll definitely use your information here.
Mr. Schill's one of the things I would suggest, and I usually just talking with folks and giving them more data or whatever, and getting on the phone, getting on a video call, I don't charge folks for that. So should you be approached by another developer or developers, whether it's, we look at senior care housing, for example, assisted living, nursing homes, and cover that tonight. So we've covered a lot of stuff in the study. If somebody needed to know about your market, and they could look at the study and probably learn a lot from it, but there are probably some details, like, well, Patrick, my product is this, and it's located over here. What are the opportunities for that? I, I can help them through that to get them comfortable because I don't want somebody to make this mistake, develop the wrong thing. You don't want that to happen. So I can help in that capacity as well.
Did you all exchange information?
I gave him my card, so it's up to him.
That's good. All right. Thank you.
All right. Very good presentation. Thank you, folks. Good luck.
Let's see. Eric, you OK?
Yeah.
All right. 10A, this time, our new interim county manager, Warren Cave.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give you a very quick update on our recovery efforts for Hurricane Helene. Obviously, we've, I've said before, we weren't affected as badly as some of our neighbors, but we still have some recovery efforts going on in our community. Our own needs committee has an application available on our webpage if folks still have a, a need for something that hasn't been met somewhere. There, there will be some funds available, small amount of funds for that. But in particular, particularly if we have folks that have a need, we would like for them to send that to us because there may be an agency or a group or somebody that we can connect you with to, to meet that need. So we encourage folks to use that. The last account we had from our FEMA representatives here, there were approximately 800 applications that had been filed in Macon County, and about $300,000 had been funded to those folks. Obviously, not all of them were funded, but, but there was a significant amount of money that was, was put towards some of those folks. The FEMA staff that are here have converted over to what are called disaster recovery center staff. And those folks can, they can help you file an application if you have a need, but they can also follow up with an application. For instance, if you've been denied and there's an issue with that, those folks can follow the application through the process and help you work through that. And those folks are available daily at the A B room, front meeting room at the Health Department and DSS. So we encourage folks, if they have any issues, to go meet with those folks. We still have some issues with some access. Rainbow Springs Road is still an issue for a significant part of the community over there. They're not isolated, but access has been dramatically, the timeframe has been increased for a lot of those folks, not just for them, but for emergency responses to that area. Their drive times, they've probably added 20 to 30 minutes on their drive time there. So that's a complicated process, but we're, we're trying to work with the stakeholders there to make sure the right solution becomes available for those folks.
Is that going across Weyer?
Rainbow Springs will be the gravel road between 64 West and Weyer Road. And it's, it's actually, the access problem is closer to the Highway 64 end. So those folks are having to go the other direction and come out on Weyer Road. One issue we have is the, obviously with our debris removal in Highlands, we had a storage location there where we took vegetative debris. We have negotiated an offer with the Army Corps of Engineers. They're going to actually remove that debris for us. It's on Foreman Road. They're going to remove it for us free of charge, and they've already been in conversation with our solid waste folks to, to get that debris down there so there won't be any charge to Macon County for that. So that was a, a good thing for us. The Highway 106 issue, though, most of you are aware that Highway 106 is still impassable, which has caused some issues for a lot of people. EMS in particular, we've been staffing an additional SUV with a paramedic on the south end of town with our partners down there, in addition to the truck we've had during the day there to try and provide the adequate coverage for those folks on Scaly Mountain. But there's some other issues there we, we need to, to talk about. One of those would be solid waste, and I'll ask Chris to, to come up. But one, one of the problems we're having is the transfer station in Highlands. Typically, that hauler will move that waste down that 106 and bring it to our Franklin location. But with the, with the highway being broken, the travel time has increased dramatically for that hauler because now they're having to go through Cachers, through, down 107, through Colby, across Cali Mountain to get to the landfill. So Chris can reiterate, but typically what should be three to four hauls a day is now down to one to two. Is that correct, Chris?
Pretty much one, yeah. Shall I just?
Yes, sir.
So first, let me back up a half step. It turns out that the contractor from the Army Corps of Engineers, nobody told him 106 was closed.
Ooh.
So they came and set up today and got all prepared with their sky lift to look down in trucks and all that, and then realized this road is no longer here temporarily. And so they all went back home. So we're not exactly sure. They're going to go and regroup and come up with another plan. The, for reasons I don't understand, but I've not seen the contracts, they were going to bring the waste en masse, not, they weren't going to grind it first. They were just going to bring us the trees and debris. And yeah, they don't know exactly what they're going to do now because they were going to come down 106, apparently.
The, the good thing with that agreement is that's an agreement between the state of North Carolina and the Corps of Engineers who hires the contractor.
That's for them to work out.
So that, that will be on them, but our net cost will still be zero on that as far as them doing the hauling.
I mean, and we are, I mean, when it shows up, if it had shown up today, or if it stay, if it's still going to come whole as, as planned, they're going to pay us tipping fee. It will become ours. We will then have to grind it and, and all the stuff, it'll just become part of our pile. So I don't know, you know, they, they went back to the drawing board. When they come up with a new plan, they will let us know. But much like the problems we're experiencing, 106 was apparently a surprise to these folks. So anyway, 106, you know, that's, that's kind of our lingering impact from the storm is that we can't get trash down the mountain as we have been. How we have handled that thus far is we are, we are turning all the contractors in Highlands away and sending them directly to Franklin. That allows us to, to get Johnny Household in Highlands and, for the most part, working with the town of Highlands to get their waste in. But, you know, we're limited to 20 tons a day. That's how much we can get on a truck, and we can only get one pull a day. Obviously, we know that that's not, not the best way for it to go. You know, I know all the contractors up there are, are not enjoying having to trip down the mountain. So we, we have looked at the potential for adding additional, additional haulers to come in to see us through 106 restoration. And I have spoken with, I have spoken with, well, Warren, I've spoken with some potential haulers, I've spoken with J and B regarding, you know, any kind of franchise issues. And so we, we have a plan that could get us to three or four trucks a day, which in normal times, that would, that would be sufficient. I don't know if we turn the spigot back on, that even that may be a challenge for a short period of time. But basically, there's a couple of actions, and I have no idea why I didn't bring that piece of paper with me. I might can quote it from my head, but if we were going to, if we were going to seek to ramp back up the Halls Transfer Station to allow contractors back in, it might not be a smooth ride, but, you know, to ramp it back up to get, let the contractors come back in by bringing in additional, additional haulers for, for the debris during the 106 time. There's a couple of actions that, I don't, I don't know exactly what kind of action. The, the solid waste ordinance, when I say 5003B, basically says that the board will decide who can and, who can and can't. Basically, y'all would have to say it's OK to bring in an extra, extra hauler. Because, of course, our, our franchise is a franchise, and so if we're going to bring more people in, y'all are going to tell me that's cool and authorize Warren to enter into a contract for that. We had also discussed with, with one of these folks, the potential of taking the waste out of state to either Union, South Carolina, or, or Georgia, only under the premise that that would be, that would allow one truck to make two trips a day instead of the, you know, in a, in, you know, a three and a half, four-hour turnaround versus the five and a half hour turnaround going the way that, that we're going. After having more talks with the, with those folks today, it turns out for them, it's probably not much of a difference. It's probably not enough of a time saving to go to Georgia versus to come to us. And so we're, we're probably, we would probably, our ordinance 50-07C says always generate, Macon County must come to a Macon County solid waste facility unless otherwise authorized by the board. So if some of this was potentially going to go out of state, I would also need y'all to say that was OK. And whatever means of you saying something's OK.
Chris, let me interrupt you if you don't mind.
Yes.
I mean, this is a real problem in Highlands, and I've had numerous calls. I'm sure you've had way more than I've had. I mean, can J and B not handle?
Well, there's just, I mean.
The capacity?
I mean, it's, the trip just takes so long, there's just no way for...
I guess the question is, can they subcontract other drivers and supplement that? Do we need to enter into a new contract with a new company for an interim basis? But I feel like this is something that needs to be handled, and it needs to be handled pretty quick.
Well, and, and, and like I said, we, we have a plan and can handle it once you give me those two authorizations in whatever form Eric thinks appropriate.
Are you good with that?
But it's a short, I mean, we're looking at potentially 10 to 12 week, 10, a 10 to 12 week period. We're looking at 10 to 12 weeks presumably. So obviously, the quicker we can get it started, the more help we can be, but it is a, it is a short-term force majeure situation.
Now it's an emergency.
Commissioner Young, I, I just say it's our recommendation that we do that because we, we would have already done that under a service contract agreement had it not been for the franchise ordinance because we, we can't overstep that. But, but if you're OK with adding the company, which would be our recommendation, we, we can enter into agreement with those companies and make that agreement.
I feel like it's, I feel like it's almost J and B's to turn down. And if they can't handle the capacity, well, then they understand we have a decision to make, and that's the decision we have to make. It leaves us no other choice, as far as I'm concerned.
And I, and, and again, I have spoken with Benita, and she understands.
So there should be no problems. I'm ready.
What about using Buck Creek?
Can't get tractor trailers up and down.
Approved out by the state. State has to send you down 107.
It's a nightmare on 64 and Buck Creek because now we have all the school buses and everything traveling that road, and it, it is a very dangerous situation, what we're facing with 106 being closed.
And, you know, one of the earlier recommendations I got for some folks in Highlands was to go 28 to War Woman. And then the day I got that recommendation, there was a tractor trailer hung up on War Woman.
They, they actually widened that section there.
Something about a last turn at the bottom.
But they widened that now, so it's, and that's actually about the only way those tractor trailers can get into Highlands unless you go 107 back through Cachers or whatever. So it's, it's a nightmare in which the state has it published that, was it 30-foot trailers are no longer allowed on that road? Well, now we're seeing these companies with their 28-foot trailers and their semis coming up through there. And I videoed the other day, we had four trucks right there in the gorge, big trucks, and it was interesting.
Was anybody working on 106 to repair it? I talked to a couple of DOT guys. I wasn't impressed.
I know Bryson, you got the contract from how?
I did talk to Bryson today. They have gotten that contract. I, I, you know, I don't know a timeline. Anecdotally, through, you know, they had a plan, they kept a lane open, they thought they had a plan, got in there, looked at it, said, no way no, and shut the road down. So they're going to have to go deeper and further than they thought. But beyond that, you know, I'm, I, I have tentatively heard, like I said, 10 to 12 weeks, you know, about three months.
I think the, the target date's sometime right around the first of January, and, and we'd like to reiterate that this contract would only be until that road is fixed because at that point.
Whatever contract we, we get involved with, it will be under the emergency, you know, Helene emergency that wiped out this road. So once the road is back and we can go back to normal, this contract would end at that point.
Well, that was my next question, was funding. So is this part of the bucket from the federal?
We, we will have to, to put the money out upfront, but we will apply for disaster funding if, if any becomes available that we qualify for to try and get that back somewhere.
So you need a motion to be able to have an exception to the franchise agreement and to be able to take our trash out of state, potentially Homer, Georgia.
If that hap, if that.
If necessary.
Yeah, if necessary. Because it doesn't look like it's going to save us good time or money.
And to allow us to enter into that, to direct me to enter into that agreement to us, for us to do that.
Are you good with that, Eric?
Yes.
Can I do that for a motion?
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Can there be two motions?
Yes, there can be two motions, and I do think you need to add in there that it is with J and B's blessing.
Well, and whatever, whatever contract we come up with in the next, whenever we can get a truck, as soon as we can get a contract put together with all the right wheres and therefores, we, we have been and will continue to work with J and B, and we will, we will review that contract with them to make sure that they're, they're good.
And the responsibility at first will be to J and B. J and B will, will haul what they can haul, and this will only be for the excess stuff to get us compliant up there to make sure we...
And what I've, what I talked to these other folks about, actually, I was talking to two different folks, and it turns out they're, they do business with each other. So it, so it's both of them is like, at the end of the day, we'll know what we've got, you know, on board. And so the first can in the morning is J and B's franchise can. Then if we need one additional, two additional, three additional, you know, we'll tell you today, that's what we need tomorrow. And, and run it that way, you know, just to try to, we, if we have extra, we can, we can stage a can, we can stage a trailer overnight. We just need to pick up that extra load the next day.
Just want to be clear, I mean, what I'm really interested in is you guys not turning down contractors. Maybe we can somewhere store, I know there's guidelines, but maybe they can store for an interim or an emergency basis on site. You know what I mean?
Well, like I said, we can store for 72 hours.
There you go. Okay. This time, let me go ahead and make a motion. I'd like to make a motion. We authorize county manager to amend the exclusive contract with J and B for an emergency basis to offer supplement hauling.
I'll let you.
I already have a motion, mate.
No, I just, I just have the language and the ordinance.
You want to go ahead and second it?
I'll second that motion.
Chris, anything else you need to say?
Well, I, I, I don't think we're necessarily amending the franchise. We're, we're authorizing additional, under this circumstance, we're authorizing additional haulers to manage this, the excess waste that we can't haul, that we can't get.
Until the road's fixed.
Until the road's fixed.
So the verbiage on the first motion, I would say, would be to allow the county manager to enter into a contract vendor authorizing them to transport tractor-trailer loads of waste from the Highlands Transfer Station under an emergency act due to tropical Storm Helene caused enclosure of Highway 106. And then, well, that'd be the first motion.
I'd like to retract my motion and adopt. That is my motion.
Can we, will you do the same?
We're going to get it down.
You should have gave me that piece of paper.
But, Chris, one thing about, not everyone has the ability. Just because you have a big truck, you can't hook up to trash and haul.
Oh, right, right.
So it's not like anyone with a tractor and trailer could actually hook up, and we're not cutting anybody else out of business. These folks are, have, or they have the ability.
Again, one of these is a vendor that, that, that does business in Macon and around, in surrounding areas. The other is a contractor in Macon. The, the in Macon contractor does not have the correct wetline kit to run walking floor trailers. And so pending what, pending the outcome of this and what we put together, I think that they will be retrofitting at least one of their trucks with the high and low pressure dual line kit to work walk. But, but having a truck is, is no good because we don't have tippers, and if you get down here and we can't offload you, then, you know, but, good point.
Okay, so have a motion, have a second.
Yep. In further discussion, all in agreement, raise your hand. We're on.
Okay. Then the second one would be pending the repair and reopening of 106 to allow the...
And so, pending what, pending the outcome of this and what we put together, I, I think that they will be retrofitting at least one of their trucks with the high and low pressure dual line kit to work walk-in. But, but having a truck is, is no good, because we don't have tippers, and if you get down here and we can't offload you, then, you know, but, good point.
Okay, so have a motion, have a second.
Yep, any further discussion? All in agreement? Raise your hand. We're on.
Okay. Then the second one would be pending the repair and reopening of 106 to allow the solid waste generated in the county to be disposed of outside of Macon County.
So moved.
Second.
Now, listen, I'm okay for that, till we're staying long-term, I have no trouble sending our trash to Homer, Georgia.
Well...
I'm just being honest.
That's fine, and we've had these discussions, and, and we've more recently had these discussions. I'm cool with it, because, because I'm putting, I'm putting the bill on him. It's, it's going to, I mean, it's going to cost more, obviously, so...
I mean, certain types of debris would be easier to store here, and certain types... Anyways, I'm just, just a statement.
That's fine.
Any more statements you're discussing?
I second, I second that idea.
All right, we've had some discussing of all right. Vote, all in agreement?
We'll get it done.
You're waiting on us, you're going backwards.
Fair enough.
Another Jack Morgan.
I was tasked last month to bring back three quotes for a septic system on a piece of property on Prenish Road, and I'm sorry I didn't get it in the package in time, it's like a few days ago.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, sir.
Jack, I'd like to have one, I know it can't hardly read, but let me...
Whoa.
I can smell.
Anyway, number three, the chief, one I got was $18,900. That is, is not including the electrical connection, which, because it's a pump system, which probably another $1,000. And that would, that's, that's lock, stock, and barrel the system that you asked me to price.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, sir.
County manager, anything you need to add to this?
Well, I just, I want to remind the board, and Eric can, can reiterate, there is a reason that we're discussing this, we talked about it last meeting, as far as a, it was a stipulation on easement for a sewer line that went through this property many years ago, so we're, you as a board are trying to go back and correct a, a situation that was started way before our time. Eric, do you want to add?
Sure. Okay, so the background on this, first of all, the property we're talking about is at the intersection of the Georgia Road and Prenish Bridge Road. Back in the late 80s, as an economic development plan, the county authorized and paid for the installation of water and sewer down 441, outside the town limits. The town agreed to accept that sewer and water and sewer lines conditioned upon the county paying for that. In order to obtain those easements, the agreement between the county and the property owners was that the county would pay for the water and tap fee for those properties to tap on to that. This property actually never got on, but there are letters starting in, from 89 to 93 confirming that even though the water and sewer has already gone through, that the county will continue to pay for those water and sewer tap fees. Fast forward to today, property owner contacts the town and says, "Is water and sewer still available for this property?" And the answer is yes, and so it comes back to the, to the county as to whether or not it's, it's going to continue to pay or honor the agreement to pay for the water and sewer tap fees. That's what it's on for to today. We've since learned that the town does not have the ability to tap the sewer into that sewer main. It's a forced main, and this property is substantially below, we think, where the, maybe the sewer main is. That was, so we were exploring costs of what it would cost to put in a septic on that property rather than tapping into that. Looks like under the agreements that we are, we agreed to pay for the taps rather than, and, well, since that time, I believe the town has now come up with its, what's the name of that?
An availability fee.
An availability fee for the sewer, so that's a substantial cost that was never agreed upon by the county at that time. So at this point, I think you've got three options. The, the first option is to say, yeah, we're not going to comply with that original agreement. Second option would be pay what the letter say, which is pay for the water and sewer tap fees regardless if they are able to tap on or not. And the third option would be to go ahead and pay for the septic. At this point, I would probably recommend option two, which is honor the agreement, even if you could make an argument that the statute of limitations has passed, to pay for the water and sewer tap fees regardless if they're able to tap on or not. In discussions with town manager, it looks like we've got costs for the water tap fee would be $3,400, and that's with the town waiving several hundred dollars in some fees, I can't remember what they were right now. And then the second part would be the sewer tap fee, which is $2,250, bringing the total cost to $5,650. And that would be paid, upon your motion, would be paid contingent upon that property owner presenting an invoice, or that it was either already paid by them for, that they installed their water and their septic, or presenting the bill and the county paying that bill directly to the provider that provided for that. But you in agreement with that, Warren?
Yes, sir, and, and we want to reiterate, that dollar figure, the $5,650 is based on what the tap fees would be based on our original agreement. If, if the folks want to pursue the tap fee, if they can figure out some way to make that work, then obviously we'll, we'll pay that for the tap, but the town's telling us we can't do that. But if they want to pursue a septic system, then the $5,650 could be applied toward a septic system as well, as long as they bring us something that says we're, we're actually installing the septic system, and then we can either reimburse them or some other way Lori can work out for us to help cover the cost of that.
CO on the building, is that, is that sufficient evidence?
Pardon?
A CO on the building?
There's, with a sewer system and a water tap, yeah.
I mean, that's all we're going to be sure that it's completed in, certificate of occupancy.
So it sounds like the, the agreement was the tap fees, not a septic system, not an engineered system, and so I don't know why the taxpayers of Macon County would be on the hook for $19,000 for an entire septic system. So at this time, Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the $3,400 for the water tap fee and $2,250 for the sewer tap fee in the amount of $5,650, contingent upon the, the project being completed, and, and that would be a reimbursement or paid directly to the town of Franklin if that's, if we do a sewer tap. That's my motion.
Would you mind also including in your motion that that $5,650 would be a budget amendment from contingency? Because that's not currently budgeted anywhere.
Now you're really working me. And, and we would have to do a budget amendment in the amount of $5,650 on the, yeah.
From contingency.
From contingency.
Thank you.
Second.
I'll second, based upon a concern, a certificate, based upon a certificate of occupancy, which would state that they've completed the project. Is that satisfactory?
Yeah.
So I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Hey, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, can I ask a question? Do we, do we need another agreement with these people, or do we just, what do I do next?
I see Jack, you up here on the seat?
I can, I can send that out to you and Warren.
Okay, good, okay. Yep, I'll stay put.
Over on the seat, yep.
Yeah.
All right. Morgan, you're the, you're the man again.
At the library. If you remember several months ago, this is our turn, our architect, Peter Loper, I'll introduce him in just a second, we get up here. But remember several months ago, you asked me to investigate what was going on at the library, and we did, and we brought back the problems that we had. Mr. Loper, our architect, has helped us design a fix for that, and we put it out for bid, and we got one bid, that's the only people out of four that were really interested in the job, and that happens to be a local business, Wind River. On that handout there, the first corrective package explains what it entails a little bit. If you remember, the original portico chair is shifting away from the building. We've got to lift it back up, glue it back where it goes, we've got to put footers on a temporary support, then we've got to cut those posts off, tie those rock piers down, put a metal post back, put this flying in the wood post where we've cut it off, and then re-rock it. That will hold it there. Then we're going to clean it up and restain that, so it'll stay put, and it looks pretty decent. We're going to have to work some on the front face of the entrance where it's pulled it away, we're going to have to remove some rock, do some work there, re-flash it. Also, on the inside, where we had the black mold-looking stuff up the ceiling, this will be to remove the, that paneling down for eight feet and restore that with new paneling and restain the whole ceiling of the library, because we can't just stain a little bit, and it looked like a patchwork quilt, if you don't mind. So that'll take care of that. Now, the problem up on the ridge cap of the metal building, we're going to take that off and try to discover what's going on. There's, it's made of SIPs panels, if you're familiar with SIPs panels, it's insulated foam with plywood on both sides, that's how it's built. They might not be meeting properly at the top, allowing moisture to go up and down, because if you've got the interior temperature of that library at, say, 68 degrees, and it's 90 degrees outside and the roof's 120, you're going to have condensation in that ridge cap, and it's coming back down. So we're going to investigate to see what damage has been done to the plywood roof panels. That is in the base bid. Now, the other alternates, when I'm not, I'm not sure, an architect's not sure, and a contractor's not sure, we're going to have to do any of alternate one or two. But just be forewarned that if it's badly damaged, the first one is we take the roofing, metal roofing off, store it, and replace what's necessary, the plywood and the SIPs panels. Now, trying to put that metal roof back together is going to look like you know what. I don't want our library to look that bad. So the alternate two would be replacing that, that roof panel. But what I'm asking for tonight, what I'm asking for, is just the corrective package number one with the base bid. Now I'd like to turn it over to our architect, Mr. Peter Loper, if he can fill up any gaps that I left out and answer any questions you got.
Hey, thank you all. My name's Peter Loper, I'm an architect from Asheville, and y'all hit the nail on the head that was bad there. That was crazy stuff, that flood, but anyway. All right, so Jack's talked about this, basically the approach, and it was a tricky one, because we know there's mold on the underside of the roof or the ceiling. It's, it's been verified with a Fliwood Daniels, I think, there was some testing that Jack had done, so we know that. What we believe is happening is these SIPs panels, which are sandwiches essentially, and they're structural insulated panels, so that's what you have up there. They were notorious for air leakage between the joints, and so it's, if that is occurring all the way down, you know, we're not seeing mold anywhere further down, so we're hoping that's not happening. What we do think is that, is that the ridge that is occurring, if there is a gap, it isn't, it is an unvented roof. Now, most of the time, you vent roofs, but not if it's vaulted, and if it's done by the book, you don't have to. But it's almost like the old, the EPHUS that was out years ago, there were all kind of problems initially, they've solved it. This was an early SIPs installation, and I, I believe that that's why we're seeing that mold. So what we're doing is, Jack mentioned, is pulling the ridge cap off, and it's an unvented ridge cap. We're observing that, and as he said, we're pulling the tongue and groove vaulted ceiling back, I believe it's eight feet on the inside, to see if we can see any other mold growth or anything like that. And then, as I have it in the drawings, then we'll have some more testing, somebody to come in and verify and see what's going on. The objective and the hope is that we can, that everybody says it's fine, we can treat it, go ahead and put the ceiling back in. I do, there is one detail that we're going to do at that ridge, and that's to saw cut straight down the center of it, inject it with foam insulation to make sure there's no gap there at all. Seal it back up, and that's it. Now, as Jack said, when you, when you expose the underside of that ceiling, if we see more, we don't know what we're up against. And it's, unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball, it's just, it's pretty much impossible until we start really kind of opening up a bit, but we're hopeful that the, the base bid is going to do the trick, so...
So, the roof is leaking in multiple places. Has that been addressed, Jack?
Yes, that's the, that part of the roof.
Yeah, I mean, the last time I was out there, there was, they were having buckets, and the ceiling was falling in and everything else, so...
I think it's basically...
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's a, the building is, basically you have the portico chair with this old timber frame, and that inside, that whole timber frame structure just continues all the way through the building, from front to back, on either side flanking that, or flat, it's a flat roof structure, and that's the thing where you're talking, it's all a membrane. But I under, that's what we were discussing, I'd heard that as well. But it's not a part of the scope of this.
That's the question I had, was, is there stained and seen metal on top of the SIPs panels?
Yes.
So that sounds like that's the, that's the issue right there, is the metal roof is leaking.
It's not, though, I don't think.
You think it's condensation?
You'd think so, we think it's condensation, yeah. And it's just like a nice cold water, you know, in the summertime.
I mean, how, look, how's this going to make it any better? We're doing almost the exact same thing.
Well, it's a good question. Ideally, I would, you know, in the ideal scenario, you'd go back, and if you wanted SIPs panels, you'd make sure every one were done properly, you'd reseal it, pull the whole thing off and redo it. It's cost prohibitive, prohibitive at this point.
Is there a way to vent that rib?
Uh, you can vent the, the, the cap.
I mean, the ridge cap, sort of?
Yes, and we could put a vented ridge cap back. Now what, and that might help just under that ridge, but normally, when you have a vented ridge, you have vents that are lower, either at the soffit area or a gable end or something, you have high-end vents, so you get some, some convective current.
The only thing I'm worried about is doing the exact same thing we have right now.
No, I, I agree, yeah. That's an option, and we could consider that. At this point, we were considering just treating it like it is a non-vented roof, do it right at the top. Now, there is no guarantee that that, that is going to do it. We could also go that route. Another thought I had is, what I believe is that, you know, you do have a differential of temperature in that top vault area, so in the, in the, in the winter time even, it's probably 80 degrees up there on that. Outside, it's 20 degrees, so you've got this major change. I actually considered if there were a couple of ceiling fans or something, just to move air, but again, that is not a part of this either. What we're really trying to do is, and it was a couple of things, really is tackle that portico chair, and then do some more observation here and figure out really what we have, and hopefully it's not bad.
Got a question.
Yes.
I see my library back there. Stand up. Now, you've heard this, when's your next board meeting?
How, it's December.
December. Are you available to confer with her board and talk with her, your board, and update?
Absolutely, yes.
And if you're not available, and...
I, I would love to.
Do you have a plan for when, whenever the construction, whatever method you determine, you're happy to call the, whatever, still... we're happy to accommodate whatever the construction, uh, we can enter and exit through our meeting room, meeting, um, and I'm told that our parking lot would be somewhat restricted and it's, it wouldn't be a, an O so much as like a C. But we're perfectly willing and able to adapt for our services and community during this time when this happens. We're happy to get the ball rolling and we would like to see the library back into top shape as soon as possible.
I'm glad we're happy.
Do you have a card on you?
Yes.
Let me, yeah. We want you to stick, get in touch where you can explain all this to your board.
Could you not do a moisture test on all that ceiling up there? I mean, because when you go in and you look at the ceiling, in the, in the peak of the ceiling, you've got about two, 18 inches on each side that is black.
Right.
Um, and it's not uncommon for us to have log cabins that have been sitting all winter and everything else.
Right.
For a little bit of black stuff start forming on the wood. So we go in and we clean that. But instead of taking all these panels off, it seems like we could do a moisture test and see how far.
How bad it is.
How bad that is.
You know, I think we, you could. I guess what my question is, I don't really know what's happening, but in that sandwich is the problem. I'm concerned about it a bit. Um, if we did that, I wouldn't mind having a core or something of the SIPs panel and see what's going on. Is it, has it saturated the insulation? If not, and it's bone dry and there's no other microbial growth or anything, you know, it would certainly, it would, it, I'm not the expert on that. It's going to have to be, say, um.
Structural engineer?
Well, no, it would be one of the environmental testing company, somebody. In fact, we do have a structural engineer that's, uh, a, a, a structural engineer is helping with the portico chair portion.
I just think that that would be, um, one of the first things is just, instead of going in there and ripping that thing apart, is, is do some testing and.
We know we've had, uh, Jack, when they did the, that was a moisture test they did right under the ridge though, Fleetwood Daniels. So there's been some. Um, and, you know, I would advise, once, you know, we ever feel like we're, we're clean, it's ready and all that, to come back and retest in about a year. That's what I would advise. And then I think at that point, if we're, for good, you're probably fine. It's a beautiful building.
Oh, it is.
It's a pretty nice building and it's something to be, it needs to be taken care of.
Those footers just fail on those, on the portico chair?
You've got, uh, timber posts that are embedded in rock. You don't do that.
Yeah.
And, uh, so that's, that's the issue, I think.
It's only a job to jack that thing back to the building.
Yeah. And that's one of those things, it's means and methods. We don't tell them how to do it. You say you're going to have to do this. I'm sure it's going to be probably a crane. Uh, I don't know, but it'll be interesting.
But we got to do it.
It needs to be, yeah, yeah.
It's got to be done.
I don't think there's any, in fact, our structural engineer did not think there was a danger. He didn't feel that. However, it's certainly, it doesn't look safe.
Uh, getting better.
And that's not a good thing, so.
Uh, getting better.
No. Man, it's not getting better. That's right.
Uh, what are we looking for here? Jack?
I'm looking for approval to enter into contract with Wind River Construction for the completion of the end for $409,000.
$409,000?
Yes.
And we also want to add, that will require a budget amendment as well because that money's not budgeted, which will have to come from fund balance, correct, Laura?
Correct. And I just want to confirm, so we're not adding alternate one nor two?
No.
Just the base bid?
At this point, yes.
And then also, Mr. Looper, I noticed you have a request for an additional 1,100 to 1,210.
I did and what happened is we ended up rebidding, well, we didn't rebid. We had to rework the drawings.
Rework it, right.
The, uh, so the construction drawings have, uh, have a second issue date and it's called something like post, uh, bid amended, amended construction documents. In that way, what I do is I remove any kind of, uh, revisions that were going on during the, the bid period. And it's just a nice clean set, so.
Okay.
Uh, but we also, we adjusted a few things at that point, trying to respond to some of the earlier.
Okay. And your current contract with the county, does it include like your construction administration and closeout of this project?
It does.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. I couldn't recall the, what the contract had within it.
And one more question. Those steel posts on the outside that's going to be on the stone, are those going to be wrapped in wood?
Well, actually, they're, they're going to be, they're, they're going to be wood.
Okay, so the steel.
So it's actually what it is, we're going, the wood posts, the, the timber posts that are there are actually just going to be cut back.
Okay.
The posts right now that had, uh, were the, uh, column bases, the stone column bases, uh, had the wood inside. What we're doing is rebuilding with concrete. Then at the top, you, you, we've got a steel, uh, plate with a, a, a vertical steel piece and you slot the underside of the post that goes in and it's through bolted into the post. So it will look like it was meant to be. Uh, they'll be a little bit tall, slightly taller than.
Project oversight, is that part of your contract?
Whenever.
Project oversight?
Yes, it is.
And then for pre-construction meeting, apparently you want to certainly coordinate with the staff and with Abby to make things slow. And I don't know where you're at on that now, coordinating with the library staff?
Yes, right.
So that would be whoever gets, well, Green River's almost bid on it, so they'll be aboard the contract. So they need to be, that needs to be worked out because.
Absolutely. We've actually, I've got a plan. I drew up life safety plan that, that, uh, shows a way to isolate the inside and the outside because the inside, when we're undoing the, the, uh, opening up the ceiling, we do have a barrier in there just in case there's anything that's going to get in. So it's, it's pretty simple, but we've got that all worked out.
Okay.
So, uh, but, but we will definitely, hours and, you know, as you said, you may have potentially a period of time that they can knock it out or something that would work better than breaking for the weekend. I don't know.
Do we need to have a, a wording on the contract in order to put it in a motion or?
Yeah, um, your motion would be twofold. Motion to award the contract, award the contract to Wind River Construction in the amount of 409,000 and also a budget amendment from general fund, fund balance in the amount of 410,210. That incorporates Mr. Looper's additional fees for the work he's had to do once these bids were received and subsequent. Sounds like he's got further work to do.
I believe that Mr. Sherrill, Mr. Higgin, y'all, y'all worked on this. Who, who been doing the, didn't you start off, you and John start off?
John and I worked on it, but it's, we just, I mean.
Just went and identified the problem and said we have a problem.
Bet it's the one lays on, library lays on, Mr.
Well, uh, on a side note real quick, one of the, we talked to one of the gentlemen we spoke with, apparently was there during construction. He said that mold cropped up immediately. I mean, very quickly, which is interesting. And that's actually maybe a good thing because if it had or not, it's further down, you know.
I just want to say, thanks for coming from Asheville. I know you were doing a lot of work over there with structural after that storm. Don't you guys have to inspect every, every home that got damaged?
Yes, pretty much.
And just, thanks for coming over here and taking this project.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah, we feel, uh, it's just overwhelming outpour of help and, uh, it, it's great. And we're, my home, I mean, we're very lucky. We had a little bit of damage, but goodness, even, even in my neighborhood, just homes that are just destroyed, so it's all over.
Motion?
All right. So you said we have to do two of them?
You can make one motion.
Okay.
That just awarded the contract to Wind River in the amount of 409, 409,000 and then the budget amendment from general fund, fund balance in the amount of 410,210.
All right, so let's just go with what you just said.
Okay.
Give me a second on that, John.
I got to pee.
You're closed.
Did he make the motion?
Yeah, then he made the motion. And what I said, he was, this motion.
Absolutely, I'll second that motion.
In terms of discussion, all in agreement? Put your hand.
When can they start work on this?
Uh, they can start moving very, pretty quickly is what I understand. Uh, I would say within the next couple of weeks.
Is there a period, time period in there?
150, yeah.
Completed or started?
Who completed?
Complete, to substantial completion, please, what I've got.
I'm, uh, good.
Yeah. And he, they think it may go faster, but, uh, you know, we don't know.
Lot of unforeseen.
I know. I was scratching my head trying to figure out how to, to write it up to cover the bases and it's just hard to do it.
It is, yeah.
But thank y'all.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Appreciate it. All right, where we going now? See, Higgin, you next?
I'm here.
All right.
Discussion regarding environmental health fees. Uh, hey, Kathy. We've worn this thing out, Kathy and I, over about 15 years. Wish you hadn't been there 15 years, but never been happy with the fee schedule that we've used here in Macon County to charge for, uh, things. And after hearing the gentleman present on housing, we hear about housing and housing shortages. That's all you hear about it. Nobody ever knows anything about it. What's, what's federal government, state, local government's going to do to do anything about housing shortages? And, uh, uh, I appreciate Scott's take on here a minute ago, but, you know. Total cost of environmental health fees, somewhere 200, 250,000 on a good year. Uh, and everybody says, well, they ought to pay for that, you know, it ought to be self-sustaining. Well, nothing about government is self-sustaining. I mean, there's no other services we don't charge every time Brett comes out to our house or Jonathan, we can't, they can't charge us for coming out there. So it's a service. Government, local government is a public service and, uh, should be free of any associated fees. And then, and I got to think about this thing and I brought up a lot of things in 12 years that didn't fly. I can live with that. I mean, but I've got to, I've got to put this out there, my take on it. It's what can we do locally? Uh, the gentleman there offered a couple of things and one of the recommendations he had in there was to look at waiving fees. And we all know that 25% of the cost of construction has to do with some sort of regulations, fees or maybe not locally, but building fees, transportation, everything. And my discussion with you was that, hey, let's just tip our hat to the people who directly invest in housing in Macon County and say, hey, you moved, come, come to Macon County, we're going to give you a little break. And it may not be much and the total cost of the project, it was, Scott said, it would be minimal. But it's just a tip of the hat. You've got to start somewhere. And like I said, federal, state's not going to think, we're probably not going to do anything either, but, uh, uh, I would like to see those fees waived. If we really wanted to be bold about this, the big ticket is the, is the building code, the building fees, uh, that brings in a good year, Jack's already gone, I think, 600,000 to 700,000 dollars or so. The total cost of this package would be 700 to a million in a good year. And if we were in impoverished county, okay, let it ride. But each year, I think we take in four to six million dollars into our fund balance and that goes in and we use it throughout the year to do whatever. And generally, it's to expand the growth of government, to build a government building or a government project, never anything, seldom anything to assist a private investor or whatever. So with that being said, and like I say, I can live with this either way. We had three options here. Number one is not do anything. Well, I don't, I never liked that option. Number two, in discussions with you, uh, Jackson County runs a model program in environmental health in western North Carolina. And I think you and Lisa have realized that from visiting with them. Option two is to adopt their fee structures. I'm very comfortable with that. Option three is to go bold and waive those fees with guidelines. There would have to be parameters put in there so it doesn't open up. Everybody that has vacant lands, hey, I'm going to build a house. It'd have to be related to an actual contract. I mean, there'd have to be bumpers on this policy.
Right, right.
And I think it would just be a, a statement that would resonate across North Carolina. Hey, Macon County over there, they're not charging any fees. What, what's going on over there? You heard the gentleman say, a lot of people would move to Macon County if there was available housing. Well, what are we going to do as, as a government body to assist in affordable housing or any type of housing? We can just sit back and listen to these great reports this gentleman gave and later tomorrow we'll all forget about it. So what do we do? Do we do anything, number one? So I'm going to make, uh, with that being said, I'm going to make a motion and, uh, that we waive all construction related fees in Macon County. And you can either call it a pilot program or whatever, but, uh, and it's going to be a nightmare for budgeting because there's, there's got to be money come out. Uh, but waive all fees related to environmental health, uh, with parameters designed by you people that are in charge and with access to the board. And, uh, as just a tip of the hat to those people who directly invest in housing in Macon County. And if, if, I'm just going to make for the whole thing. We'll forget about option two, this is option three, just waive all fees. So I'm going to make a motion of that effect. Uh, it's something that we can afford to do. It's something we can, uh, absolutely do and we need to address housing. How do we address it? I'm saying, I, this is my little contribution to saying, this is how I would suggest we address it. I would entertain other options, other ideas to, is it, is housing an issue? And if it is, what are, what are our options? I've heard nobody else's options. So that's my motion. Uh, hey, earlier, did you have something you want to say?
Well, I just, you know, um.
Wait a minute. Yeah, we've got a, we've got a motion. And I'm going to second that motion so we can go into discussion about this.
Thank you. Um, you know, the, uh, over time, Paul and I have talked about this in many, many ways and I know he, he's one member of the Board of Health who have, he's, you know, they've been considering this as well with him. I think, um, they've got reservations for, uh, tax, you know, using taxpayer money to do this. I think when they look at the fees, they're trying to figure out a way not to burden the taxpayers and that's definitely the stance that they were coming from. Paul and I have talked about, like he's saying, um, ways we can help the, the local businesses and, um, the problems that, that we think about are the, you know, if we just do an overall program that is, uh, free for everyone to come, would that just bring on people to apply just for the sake of, you know, of knowing? They don't have intention of building, but, um, that's what we're trying to avoid. We, you see and hear me, um, talk about shortage of staff over and over and over again. So, you know, just being the thought of overburdening the current minimal staff that we have, it feels like a nightmare. Um, and don't want to do that. So, um, you know, what are the other, the other thing that we've talked about as well is, is looking at ways we could fund actually, um, with the cost of repairs to keep people in homes, because we, we have talked about that too. And, um, that would be very beneficial if we had some money to be able to, for individuals low income that could qualify, repair, actually repair their system in order to keep them in the homes that they have. So, um, there's a couple of ways of doing this. This has not been done across the state, um, that I, I can't find anybody that, that, you know, we, any environmental health program that has ventured into this, um, of waiving all the fees. So, um, it would be trying to figure it out and make it, you know, to make sure if that's what you wanted to have happen, making sure that that happened in a way not to overburden the staff.
Well, one thing that I'll have to say is, um, it is, um, it's worth a chance. I mean, we can always go back.
the staff.
One thing that I'll have to say is, um, it is, um, it's worth a chance. I mean, we can always go back, we can always start rebuilding these fees, but, but, you know, just as Commissioner Higgin has stated, we live in a tourist county, that construction is the driving force and tourism, second homes, third homes, whatever, that's what drives this economy. We have a housing shortage? What are we doing? The government at all levels are sending out incentives for people to invest. In my mind, this is an incentive for developers to come in here and help us with this housing crunch. And, just like you said, the government is always taxing us and spending our tax dollars to make the government bigger. The private sector needs to grow, and in my mind, this is one way that the private sector, these builders, you take a vacant piece of property and you put a two million dollar house on that piece of property, what is the tax revenue coming into this county for that? It's huge. And it's happening, um, especially in my district, um, I mean, these houses seem to be getting bigger and bigger and more expensive, and, and that goes a long ways for that six million dollars a year that you were referring to that goes into the fund balance, uh, the undesignated fund balance. So, um, in my mind, I like it. I think if it's, um, if it's not something that works out in a year or two, then we go back and, um, and say, "This is not working," and, uh, it's costing the taxpayers too much money. But I think it's gonna be, um, a different outcome than that. And back to your, uh, point, yes, I own property, and no, I'm not looking for the county to give me a well permit or anything like that unless I'm planning on doing a well. And that's the way it should be. If you, just like with the septic, uh, the sewer tap fees and stuff like that, you will get that money when you move forward, or you complete it, and you will get that money. And so I don't think that you're gonna be overburdened by, um, by this huge amount of people coming, uh, pulling permits, but hopefully you are, because we have people that need a home. And a place to live.
And this has to be based on the contract, I mean, if somebody come in and says, "I want, you know, I want those fees waived," they've gotta present, and I think they have to present a contract now, if it's a due diligence process that y'all go through, so it's not a difficult thing to present a contract, that you're actually gonna build, purchase a single, wide, a double, wide, a tiny home, whatever, any housing unit, uh, if you got a contract on it, we're gonna waive those fees. And, well, what about those speculators? Let the speculators, that's what we need. If we truly have a housing shortage in Macon, we need some speculators. And, uh, but I'm very good with this, we have a motion second on the floor, I've talked about this for a long time, and, 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 like I say, I will be, this will be my last meeting, but, uh, I will encourage this board and other leaders in this county, if what are we going to do anything about this issue? We heard a fifteen-minute presentation on it tonight. What are our options? I'm throwing up, this is one option, one step. So please, if this thing doesn't pass, come back with something. We have a housing shortage, not just in Macon County, but nationwide, we can't do anything about that. Well, what are we gonna do here locally? And, uh, but anyway, thank you, Kathy.
Kathy, on, on your health board, what's their position?
Um, I've not heard anyone but Paul think this way, um, so...
And the health board meets every other month now, and I've missed a couple of those meetings and so on. And, but I did talk to one of the health board members, the, the function of this board is to fund these agencies. The purpose of these agencies, health board, social services board, whatever, their function is to administer and execute services to the, to the citizens. Funding is not part of their proper project. Funding, making sure these employees get paid, making sure we balance the budget, that falls upon this body here. And, uh, and there'll be some heads, "Oh, we shouldn't do that, we shouldn't..." Well, tell me why we shouldn't do that, and, uh...
And we, Eric and I have had to research about the responsibilities of approval of this process, and from every guidance that I've gotten is that both boards would have to approve this fee structure.
As a health board, have you heard from the rest of the board on this?
They presented you a fee plan that they voted on, which did not include this.
Right, but I'm talking about this specifically.
We haven't revisited that specifically, um, because we didn't know what to present. They know the different aspects and the different options, but...
I think that statute says, does it say shall or may? Does it read?
It says that, um, they presented the fee schedule and the board approves, but on the flip side of that is that the county says, "We don't want any fees," they're not don't know why they would object to saying, "No, we want to," I mean, I don't know why they would...
I don't pay much attention to what they say from Riley.
Well, I have to follow the statutes.
I know, I know.
So...
But, uh, if there's no fees, yeah, what's the big deal? We're, this body's responsible for funding.
I would, I would definitely go and present this back to them. We have a meeting on Tuesday of next week, and, um, we'd make sure that it was clear what we were presenting back to them.
You got a motion, you got a second? We've had discussion. Any more questions on what we're voting on here?
Paul, you know I love you. We've talked about this a little bit when we went tonight to Hala, but I have no problem waiving fees for somebody that has a well that goes dry or a septic system that fails. I have no problem waiving those fees. But, uh, it's all about checks and balances, I personally feel like the fees generated from this department should cover the cost of the department to operate, and, uh, we just built a small little building, estimated cost were around two hundred thousand dollars, our fee schedule was around fifteen hundred bucks. I mean, for me, for the implication, I think it's reasonable, and, uh, you know, talking about the surplus, I think that's wonderful. I feel like that's conservative budgeting. If we were to have two hundred dollars go into our fund balance, or it would come two hundred dollars off, I feel like we would be more irresponsible, but having five and six million dollars come in shows, you know, very, very, very strong conservative budgeting. So, like I said, I love you, and, uh, I do think the fee schedule probably needs looked at, I just, I don't think I could support completely waiving fees.
You got a motion, second? Any more discussion? Call for a vote? What do we have, three to two?
I'm six, all in favor.
Say all in favor.
All opposed.
All in favor, raise your hand. I'm not raising mine, I'm telling you. I've got most of the tape here holding down where I want it.
All in favor was just two votes? Is that correct, Mr. Shields?
I believe it, what I saw.
Multiple choice.
All opposed?
All opposed. Thank you, you guys, for your time. Anything else, mister?
I don't, I don't have anything on that.
All right, let's go to the next one.
At some point, we do need to take a restroom break. I'm afraid to make an emotional, but...
I'd support that one.
I don't know if we got enough restroom.
Y'all have to say, "Here, I'm gonna do it," it's gonna be a four to one on this next.
Take five minutes recess, there, Chairman.
Ah, five minutes. No.
Mr. Captain, rock and roll. Let's see. All right, it's right now, it's, uh, ten, ten, eighty.
All right, so we're on the Montana Regional Library Agreement. This was up for the senior review several years ago. It had been a large topic of conversation for the past two years. Revisions were suggested and presented to Jackson and Swain Counties. They received that agreement, likewise discussed it. And in your packet, there is the highlighted version of the revisions that they made to it. They made those revisions and then likewise have both signed and agreed to their revised copies. In your packet, you have the highlighted version, plus you actually have also a copy of that clean version that they signed. So this is where we are with regards to revisions to the Montana Regional Library Agreement.
Well, as layers on to the library, at this time, I'd like to actually make a recommendation for the board to enter into contract with the FRL in open agreement. Jackson County's passed it, Swain County's passed it. So there's no discussion on it. I'd like to make a motion to enter into that agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? Didn't want anything else we need to... All in agreement, so we'll vote. Five to five, right? All right, rock and roll. Let's see, Mr. County Commissioner, should I go to G first or F?
I would go with F. I think Ms. Lori Carpenter will have some information on F.
All right, so we have four action items for the Highland School project. If you'll recall, I believe it was two months ago, you approved the funding for the actual construction, guaranteed maximum price with Vanoy. But it was stated at that time that there's also soft costs associated with this project. So tonight, the four actions are, there's Budget Amendment Number 111, which is in the amount of $560,845. That would come from general fund balance. And that would cover the furniture, instructional technology, the pre-K playground equipment, special inspections and testing fees, and then some owner contingency. The second item would be approving WSP's proposal for those special inspections and construction materials testing that have to occur. Their contract amount was $74,300. That amount's included in that budget amount I just mentioned. The third item would be approving a change to LS-3P's contract to revise the design of the structural foundations. And that's relating, you know, to the underground storage tank issue. And then the fourth item would be approving TerraCon's proposal for environmental consulting services, again relating to the closure of that underground storage tank and then installing the vapor intrusion mitigation system. Now, those last two items I mentioned are $75,000 to $36,000 respectively. However, we should be seeing a change order. It would be a deduct change order from Vanoy's guaranteed maximum price. Because, you know, there's an allowance in there for the underground storage tank. So there will be a deduct in their contract, which directly offsets those last two fees I mentioned. And I know that was a mouthful, but those are the four things that need to happen tonight for us to move forward with Highland's school. And I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
And we need to act on tonight to keep that project going.
Yes, sir, to keep the project moving.
It'll die.
Yeah, the WSP special inspections, once construction starts, they have to be ready and on site, you know, as construction progresses to perform those inspections.
Lori, I'll make the motion that we continue with, how do I put that in some kind of language?
Oh, you want me to just read off what your motion will be?
Yeah, is that gonna be all right with you?
Okay, all right. The motion will be to approve Budget Amendment Number 111, approve WSP's proposal, approve the change to LS-3P's contract to revise the design of structural foundations, and approve TerraCon's proposal.
Is Keeser, we okay?
We're good.
Here's a few thoughts that I have. Probably not going to come as a surprise, but we did a GMP last month, which is a guaranteed maximum price. We come this month wanting for $750,000. Had a phone call this morning wanting to know when the turf's coming, right? Because Franklin High School's getting turf, they're expecting turf up there. I mean, I'm anticipating that being a million plus dollars. I want this thing, somebody to put a ceiling on this thing, give us a budget and say, here's the number, here's the true GMP, and let's vote on that. But I've heard three or four months in a row, this action has to been taken today, or this project won't continue. I've heard that now at least three times. And here we go again with it. And here's three quarters of a million dollars in change orders. And I still have heartburn about $800,000 to $1.3 million to fill up a tank that cost $12,000 in concrete. Sorry, I don't feel good about that. So I feel like there's still a lot of stuff lingering right here. LS-3P's not here, Vanoy's not here. And I don't know, I mean, I really do support the project, but I just want to see this thing buttoned up a little bit better. I mean, here we go, amendments and budget change orders. And so I just feel like this thing needs to be, I want to see, if we're going to put turf up there, why isn't it in here right now? Why isn't this project a part of the whole job? And then we take it or leave it, there's no budget. And I just wanted to share that, I think that's kind of my heartburn on the whole project, is hurry up and stamp this. But the project's not complete, and there's no true GMP. So I just wanted to share that.
Well, I question the $286,545. I may be completely wrong, but we've talked about these soft costs over Franklin High School-led Highland School project. And I don't see how that $286,000 is going to stop the construction of this project. Now, professional fee, $74,300, Lori, what was that?
That's WSP's, that must happen.
Okay.
I'm just trying to knock this all out tonight, you know, I'm just the messenger here. But like two months ago, I wish they had have just asked, go ahead and approve this much soft cost, but they didn't. And so instead of us approving just a piece tonight, and then me having to come back next month and ask for another piece, maybe in January for another piece, I'm just trying to button this whole thing up. I'm not aware of turf.
Well, that's what...
All I'm aware of is this, these pieces I'm presenting tonight, again, just trying to button it up, get the budget appropriated and move on.
So if we were to try to get them to just get us just one figure, so we're not coming back month after month, is that going to mess up, you know, just the project itself and moving forward with it?
From what I've been told, this is what's remaining. You know, I've been told this by LS-3P. I've not heard a thing about turf, you know, personally from LS-3P.
The...
But I believe one thing that I've heard, this project will stop. Is that right?
I don't, I'll answer that question. I think part of this is timing. And I had the same question, because I've had to look at both of those contracts to try and get the basis of those very quickly. And Eric may be able to say some more. The guaranteed maximum price for the Franklin High School included some things that aren't necessarily on this list. The contracts were written a little differently. And part of that had to do with the contractor. And I think a lot of it probably had to do with the scope of the project, because the high school project is significantly larger than Highland's, which is why I think we ended up with some of these figures here. The, part of the numbers are estimates. The furniture and equipment numbers are estimates based on an educated estimate from the architectural firm, based on the size of the building and the population of students, et cetera, the need of the classroom. So I guess to answer part of your question, we could wait. One of the things we have to do is that $74,300, because that's a required testing fee that North Carolina requires on educational facilities like these. So I think we're on the hook for that one.
So is this list, is that the only thing that's required to move that forward, to keep it moving forward?
It is, but let me also reiterate, the Highlands project has a very strict deadline of, Eric quote me if I'm wrong, August of 2025, I believe, September 2025.
Supposed to be completed, so they move in at the beginning, ready to roll at the beginning of the year.
If we are going to do the furniture and the equipment, we need to move on that, because if not, we may be holding the project up, which could cause some issues down the line now. I will say, I understand the concerns over the money, because I certainly didn't want to come here tonight and have a half a million dollar ass the first night I'm sitting here. But I also think if you approve that budget amendment and you go with those numbers, you have just set the number for them. You have set the furniture number, you have set the technology number, you have set the number to pick those out. And you, yes, we have added money that wasn't there to start with, but you basically just got to what you wanted, Commissioner Young, and you set the ceiling at those numbers and said, that's it. I don't know if that helps explain that any or not.
I think if we take that $74,000 and act on it tonight, you're going to see this same thing, soft request again next month.
We'll have to come back next month or January to get furniture money, because furniture has to be collected, ordered, there's lead times, so...
Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, I feel like as a board, we did our part in approving the amount that we were told for the project itself. Now, it kind of makes me feel like we're going to be left on the hook every time something comes up. If we don't approve it, like, it's going to be our fault for not moving this project forward. But we had an amount that we set, for example, for the high school, that this was a set amount. It was not going to go over that, right?
And for this project, y'all did approve the GMP two months ago for that ceiling, right? The GMP cannot exceed that number.
For this project?
For Highland's.
Right.
But that number did not include the soft costs that we're talking about tonight.
And there's no one here to answer, like, why that wasn't included?
And I don't know why they didn't include it, because I would have rather, again, and that's what I'm trying to just button it all up tonight. And like Warren said, if you approve these numbers, you're setting a ceiling. They can spend no more than this amount of dollars on the classroom equipment, the technology, et cetera. The owner contingency, I mean, of course, you can go for that or not. But the budget amendment's $560,845. The $74.3 is part of that. The $111,000, which was items three and four, again, there will be a deduct to Vanoy's GMP. So that is not asking for new money. That is just shifting that to LS-3P's contract and to us contracting directly with TerraCon, which we should as the owner, correct, Jack? We should have TerraCon working for us, you know, to look out for our best interest in performing the inspections on this underground tank, rather than them being employed by Vanoy.
So let's talk about this $200,000 contingency. What is that? Explain the contingency, the $200,000, where, how we came up with that amount and what that contingency is actually there for.
So I'll speak to the contingency. So again, I'm going to compare both of those contracts. The Franklin High School contract has what's known as shared contingency. There's contractor contingency and there's owner contingency built into that guaranteed maximum price that's on the contract with Carol Daniel. The contract, apparently for the Highland School, did not have a shared contingency. So there is contractor contingency built into the contract for Vanoy and the guaranteed maximum price. There was no addition in there for owner contingency. So the difference being, the contractor contingency, I've been using the example, I guess, the doorknob. If the contractor prices the doorknob, and for some reason that price changes or something happens, then that's under the contractor contingency part. Now, if we go in as the owner and we say, we want this doorknob as opposed to that doorknob, and there's a different cost, that's a design change or a scope change of the project. So that would be on an owner contingency. So you do have contingency built into the Highland's contract to cover essentially contractor omissions and errors or things that might change. You just don't have the monies in there that if you were to have, all of a sudden, something pops up and you're like, you have a design change. For instance, you want to move this door from this wall to this door and this wall over here, you don't have that built in. We could drop the $200,000 and not have that in there. But then what would happen is when that comes up, we would have to come back to the board and ask you to approve that amount of money if you approve that design. That's not necessarily a deal breaker, but again, with the timeframe that we're trying to work on to make sure we don't get the school system off track up there, if it happened, for instance, tomorrow, it could be 30 days before we come back to the board to get that approval. So what we were trying to do was to expedite that. And Lori, you can speak to the amount of the money. That was a percentage based on what we've been looking at as far as the contracts.
Yeah, the $200,000, that represents roughly 2.5% of construction cost. 2.5% of construction comes to 197, 120, I just rounded it to 200,000. For comparison, Vanoy has built in 217,078. So they're just slightly above 2.5%.
And obviously, if we don't access that, then that money will still be here and go back to the general fund.
So when you reference owner, it's this body?
Correct.
Not the school?
That's correct. For this purpose, you would be the owner, yes.
So realistically, this budget amendment of the $568.45 is including the $200,000 contingency.
Yes.
The owner's contingency. So the $74,300, we have no option. That has to be done to stay on track. These numbers, $286,545, were given to us by the architect team. We really don't know those numbers are accurate. But if we went by those numbers, we're giving a check for that amount of money for them to spend, that amount of money not come back to us and say, oh, we got this for $150,000. So is that accurate? Or we're giving them a green light to spend $286,000 on soft costs, whereas we say, okay, you figure out your soft costs and then tell us what they are. Not based on, this is nothing more than an estimate. It's so...
Yeah, the furniture, I'm not an architect, but the architectural firm, the furniture number was 3% of construction. I'm assuming that's an industry standard, industry norm. The $20,000 for instructional technology and the playground equipment of 30. They didn't provide any percentage or how they came up with that number.
So who approves this expenditure there? Is it this body or is it the school body that takes this money and spends that? Is it, does it have to be approved by us, or is it just, there it is, do the best you can with it?
It's been a while since we've had a school project where we furnished it. I think typically, the architect would work with a furniture supplier that's an expert in how to equip these classrooms. And then say, okay, school staff maybe would be involved, like you have a choice of A, B, C. You know, we don't just give them an open book to go furniture shopping. You know, we would set some parameters to say, okay, this is what this classroom needs. You can choose from, like I said, A, B, or C, or just A or B, you know what I mean? Something along that lines. But I mean, you're, like I said, if you give this number, that's there not to exceed. They could go all the way up and spend every penny. It's just a hard, it's a quandary, because, you know, until, I guess, until you get in there and get the quotes from the furniture company, you have a good hard number. But this at least establishes a ceiling, yeah.
And Carol Daniel includes that, is there...
Well, Carol Daniel did not put furniture in their GMP, no sir. But we do have an estimate for Franklin High for furniture. That's already been approved and budgeted, and we've moved on. This one, for some reason, was just handled differently. That only the hard cost, if you want to call it that, the construction, the GMP, was approved two months ago, but the ask was not made at that point to cover these soft costs. Whereas with Franklin High, we had an all-encompassing budget with, again, estimates for furniture, technology, equipment. Because you don't know until you get the bids on those items.
Is that LS-3P, hitting that up, that furniture?
Yeah, the estimates for Franklin High came from them as well.
So if approved, what will these totals put to total Highlands project?
Let's see.
As long as you keep approving change orders and oversights, they'll keep coming, gentlemen. That's just how business is done.
Tonight, the GMP is 8,832,083. And then, so if you add this, five, 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 sorry, 568.45 to it.
It's a big number. Nine, three, nine, four.
Yeah, 9,392,928. So almost 9.4 million.
That'd be a good time.
Okay.
I feel like I'm more not to pick on you first meeting here, sorry. I just feel like it's principled. I just wish this thing would have come buttoned up together. If it's $9 million, 9.2 million, all-inclusive, here's your GMP. I just feel like word on the street is, there's not a lot of confidence this board's going to build this high school for 137 million or 140 million. And I feel like I want to be very principled in that and say, no, we will. Actually, you know what, we're going to come in 5% high. And I feel like this project right here is an example of us going the wrong way. And that's why I have reservation, it's not necessarily the money. I think it's just the sequencing of the budgets here. And not picking on you, Lori, I just feel like word on the street is they're coming to ask for more money for the turf. And I just feel like, I mean, I understand, it's a budgeting item, you're taking this process from one pocket, putting it in the other. I just want to see an all-inclusive GMP, which is what I thought we submitted last month, guaranteed maximum price, GMP, and then not have to come back in January and go over more costs. You know what I mean? It's principled strictly, not necessarily the number.
I understand.
The chairman, if it would be appropriate, you know, the turf for Highland's soccer field has been, and that's one of the things that I'd added. field has been, and that's one of the things that I'd added to the agenda. But the meeting that I had with some of the contractors, school board members, we looked at that soccer field and the drainage, you know? We had the, a year-long study with the cores and, and if, that is absolutely not feasible to even consider going in there and removing all that muck out of that field. There is such a thing as Lake, Harris Lake down there, and you're talking about going down below that muck below the water level. So what's, what, what are we going to do? We're going to dig out Harris Lake and all that other stuff? Harris Lake runs back in there. The good news is that after the storm, those drains are still working that was installed there years ago. The problem to that whole place is all the water coming off of Satula. The recommendation, and this is the way we left it, was let's have an engineer come in there and tell us how much of that rock face back there needs to be blasted out, how much blasting needs to be done in that drainage ditch. There's a drainage ditch there that was left about two feet above the field level. So the water coming off of Satula hits that rock face and, and jumps the ditch and out into the field. So I left it as, I really don't want to have any discussion about anything about the soccer field in Highlands until we figure out what we're going to do with the water coming off of Satula. And so that's, that's what we're doing. I expressed to them that I would much rather have a natural grass field. Well, why do you support Franklin having turf? Because it's a multiple use. We had a big discussion about that. But right now, my main focus on that soccer field is how do we get rid of the water? And no more discussions about it until we figure that out. And, and the drains are working because they didn't have any issues after the hurricane. And of course, that one corner out there where that rock face is, that water will shoot over there and it'll swamp that place. That area, that entire school is built on a swamp. The entire school. That's called soggy bottoms, and it's called soggy bottoms for a reason, because it is a swamp. And so that's, that's where we left it. They were going to speak with some engineers, try to get a plan in motion to do that and, and, you know, and as I stated at that last meeting, we spent all this money on Highland School project. Where's the money coming from for the soccer field? We fused it all. So that's, that's the update on the meeting with the Highland School Soccer. I, I'm not in favor at this time to even consider turf on that field.
So that goes with your H down here?
That was, yeah, because it, the soccer field had been mentioned too many times about turf and, and that was the update from the meeting.
Thank you. I see if we can make a motion to accept the soft cost presented by Vanoy or presented by the architect?
Is that one here from the school board or? I mean, is this it? I mean, is this the last of the requests for Highland School project? I mean, are we going to cap this tonight and say, "That's it"?
It, it should be. I, Lori, correct me if I'm wrong, but this, this should be, to our knowledge, the only other thing we found, so it, it should be, yes.
Wasn't there already a cap at eight-million? Was it eight-hundred-and-thirty-one-five-five-three? Wasn't it, wasn't that like the GMP?
That was the GMP, but the GMP normally does not include soft cost.
But it did for the high school?
No, it did not.
It didn't for the high school project?
No, no, sir. The high school, though, like I said, we, we had the GMP from Carol Daniel, and then LS-3P provided estimates for furniture, fixtures, equipment, et cetera. And all of those were one package approved by this board.
Presented at the same time.
Yeah, when we went out and borrowed the money to go along with our sixty-two million, we had that all as one complete package, and that's what we're going off of. Like I said, for some reason, the architect made that choice two months ago when they asked y'all for the GMP money and those allowances. They failed to ask y'all for soft cost. So...
Got a motion, second. Any further discussion?
Tammy, are you still good with the motion, what I read off earlier, the four items?
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're all covered.
No further discussion, a vote, raising your hand?
In favor.
In favor? I didn't, I'm not seeing everything, okay.
I think it was five votes.
No.
No, oh, you're a no.
You voted for the last one.
Pardon?
No.
No.
Don't go there.
Pause and vote. He wasn't here.
All right, was that a four-one, Mr. Chairman?
Four-to-one. You got to say no sometime, guys. That's how you put caps on things.
Four-to-one, who does it?
All right. Franklin High School.
Now you've got my paperwork.
Okay, so before I start talking about Franklin High, I am not asking for additional money, okay? I am not asking for additional money. Both of these items are built into the budget, but we do need to get you to approve Kessel Engineering Group's proposal for geotechnical engineering, special inspections, and construction materials testing services for Franklin High. That contract amount is one-million-three-hundred-forty-thousand-two-hundred dollars. And the second thing is...
Motion to approve that first one.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All right, motion, second. All in favor?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Opposed.
Opposed, four-one, okay. The second thing is just to approve a change to LS-3P's contract, to incorporate building commissioning. Building commission is required by the North Carolina Energy Code. Services will be provided by CMTA Engineering. That amount is one-thirty-five-eight. And again, we're not asking for additional funds. It's already built within the budget, but we just need to amend the contract so we can have the building commission as required by North Carolina Energy Code.
Again, motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Lauren, thank you, Mr. King.
Are you happy now?
Just wait a couple of minutes here.
No.
Oh, let's see where we are. But sure, I'll mark an H out then, Highland School Soccer. Uh, new business?
Yeah.
So where we at?
You're done, okay.
We're at Nantahala.
This, uh, put out feelers for quotes or bids to remove that old Nantahala library building. We got to get it off the school property. And we got one from Coke Excavating in Nantahala for eight-thousand dollars to demolish and remove and clean the site up.
How much did you say, Jack?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand.
How big's that building, Jack?
It's a double-wide mobile home, is what it is.
I saw it the other day, went through it, about fell through it.
It's, it's dangerous.
Hazard. You need to get it out there yesterday.
Yep.
And you advertised that in the paper?
Nope, not for nothing, it's small. About every contractor I spoke with or called, they typed it over here, said they didn't drag their equipment to Nantahala to do that little job. Not many people in Nantahala that do anything like this.
And we've got money remaining.
Does he have to get a demolition permit?
Yeah.
And then?
We waived it. Pardon? We waived that.
We waived that, but what about closures? Do you have to dispose of that or is that restricted in any way?
No.
Taking yours a liaison over there, you...
Oh, I wouldn't take it after eight-thousand, Bob. I've torn down a lot of buildings.
Motion to approve, Jack.
I second that motion.
Lori, what were you saying, we had money left?
Yeah, I was just going to make the statement that we have money remaining in the Nantahala project, so we don't need any appropriation of funds. We just needed...
Okay, one other request tagged to that. Brand-new building, I told Jack about this. The key lock, we've been having trouble with the, with the card readers. First, they brought the wrong card, I understand. Now they say they got the right cards for the readers.
Those two.
But the key lock, when I was over there, they had two little zip ties there. I said, "What's that for?" And they said, "That's bushings." Ooh, I've never seen that. So the last time they used their keys on the key lock, pulled it out, the whole lock came out with it. Can't we just fix a dad-gentle door?
Yeah, we get it.
Whatever it takes. How do we, who, who do we get to do that?
We get it. Well, the glass shop did the doors and, uh, Smoke Mountain System did the electronic locks.
The key lock, is that the glass?
That's the glass shop.
Ooh, would be, I mean, let's just get it fixed.
I'll follow up.
Yeah.
Motion to approve, stated request.
Thirty minutes ago.
Pardon? I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, right hand?
Thank you. Thank you, Jack.
Let's see. Is there a timeframe on that, Jack, so if we get asked?
You'll hold up for the Holland?
You ever seen that?
Kevin? Auto, getting ready for you. I don't know if y'all had a copy of this or not.
Thank you.
Is that what you gave me?
Thank you, sir. If you've got an extra, if you've got an extra, I'll take one. If not, that's okay. Thank you.
We're just going to give an update on the Otto Fire Department. We've signed a letter of commitment to Civic Bank for the amount of two-point-eight million dollars. Total loan projects can cost three-point-one million, but due to the funds that we have from years past and, and the budget, we're going to put three-hundred-thousand dollars down. And the new fire department's going to be at eighty-two forty-nine Georgia Road that's across from David Culpepper's, just, just north of the old Otto School there. Hopefully be signing loan in January. We've been planning on this for about twelve years, so this is about, I'm, I'm about ready for this. Wright Construction from Silva is going to be the building contractor. He's done a lot of construction around here, Prentice Church of God, U-Save at Pharmacy, Biltmore Church. He's done a lot, so he's pretty renowned around here. Terry Bell has agreed to be our project overseer, and the building will be completed in twelve to eighteen months, starting in January. That may be, or may, may not be, but we're currently waiting for a contract with the county to lease space for Med Unit of Macon County at Fire Department. That's, that was in the works for probably six, eight months now, so you may have part of that copy of that. The architect has finalized the plans and drawings, contractor's going to be obtaining some permits and get all that back to Civic Bank, let them do their stuff that they have to do for loan finalization, and that's just an update of where we're at.
Kevin, can you elaborate, elaborate a little bit on that? We are currently waiting for a contract, and can you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir. Early on in the presentation, you heard me mention that we have an ambulance, that we've been basing out of the Otto Fire Department for some time now. We, we started off and on as a, a trial run to see what our response was in that particular end of the county. It's actually worked pretty well, and we've actually bumped that up to more permanent fixture first of October. Now, actually, we're doing some nighttime stuff there because of one-oh-six being closed. So one of the things that we had looked at through the process, either they're going to have an older building that they're going to vacate when they go into the new building, which we're in an older building now, to see, and I kind of wanted the consensus from the board, we, we think that's a good service for us, for the citizens down there. They've been offering us space free of charge with no strings attached for a while. Eric and I have looked at the, the lease that they have, the property situation, and what we need to do on our end. So what we would like, for me, would be basically a consensus from the board for us, for Eric and I to pursue a possible lease to bring back before you at a later date to, to actually make that a more official agreement for those folks in Otto.
You're saying the lease is space in the new building or the old building?
We, we talked about the old building, but, but I think we're open to whatever suggestions.
I just feel like the old building's not in the best shape, is it? I mean, long-term.
It's, uh, it's probably, the older of the buildings is forty-five years old. The other one's about twenty, twenty-five years old.
I mean, does it adversely affect your operations if we had an ambulance stationed in there?
Other than space.
I mean, that's really nice to have, and I know people down that way really appreciate that.
And people on Big Creek End, up on Betty's Creek and stuff, I mean, you're looking at twenty-five minutes.
Go head to Oldbury, I mean, yeah, it's a haul.
And, and noise, there's an objection from the board. Eric and I will pursue that a little further and bring you back an official lease, and if, if it's the new building, then that's, that's great. I mean, whatever.
We're up for options on, um, working with the, with the county with that.
Kevin, appreciate y'all's work, getting your fire department moving again, things worked out. Any further discussion?
Got any rock down there?
We may have one. You want one?
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all. Thanks for staying all night with us.
Mr. Chairman, on item number eleven-C, I believe Eric will answer to that and Kayla will sound here.
Okay, so we have with us, and she's been with us for a while now, Kelly Barnett. She's our interim, who's been working diligently on codifying and, and getting up to date all of our new code of ordinance books. That has not been done since we think maybe two thousand and eight, and so it is long past winter. We'll make everything electronic, get it on the website so that people can see all the ordinances. They're all going to be available on, online, and thanks to Tammy and Kelly for working so diligently to do that. One of the things that is missing in the current ordinance book is Macon County Planning Board Rules of Procedure. And so this is just a formality to accept those rules of procedure that they've been following since, this version since, I think, two thousand and four, originally started back in nineteen seventy-two, so that we can put those into our new ordinance book. Kelly retype those, I think, in word format version so that it can all be done, and so that, again, this is just a formality of, of confirming that it's okay to include those in our new ordinance book.
Motion to approve.
Let, let me just say one thing forward on that. Kelly, stand up.
Thank you.
Tell us about you and how you got here and where you're going and where you're from, and how you, how you got through this place.
Sure, you kind of put me on the spot, but my name's Kelly. I'm, I graduate from Franklin High School in two thousand and twenty-three. I'm now at Appalachian State, and I will graduate in twenty, well, this spring, where I'm also pursuing my master's in public administration and concentrating in local government.
And you're, you're here with them?
Yeah, I'm here with you guys till the end of the month, so...
For a part of your credit.
Yeah, I have to do a mandatory internship, getting my feet wet, and I decided to do it here, since it's my home county and giving back to the community that has gave me so much, so...
I just want them to know what...
Are they, are they paying you for this or is this free labor?
Free labor, sadly, but if you guys want to approve for me to get paid?
No, no money required.
Please, I will take anything.
Enter my, that's the middle school.
Yes, my mom is the assistant principal.
It's been some of the best free labor we've probably ever had.
Kevin, sorry. No, I'm not sorry for putting you on the spot. They need to know what you're doing. All right, thank you, Kevin. Now, what'd you have our job?
Motion to approve, Chairman.
Well, let me go back and look at it.
We're D.
I'll second that.
Eleven-D.
Yep. Here.
As long as she spells it.
We're, you're voting on 11D, voting on 11C.
11C, yep.
County pound case, and Josh made the, uh, he's chief there.
I second that.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Not call for a vote?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Let's, I didn't, I didn't say it, let's do all in favor?
All in favor?
Thank you. All opposed?
Boy, y'all are killing me. Let's see. Mr. Ryan, are you ready?
All right, so we're on to D, this is repeal of two, um, outdated ordinances that are, that just need to be repealed. The first one is a hazardous substance ordinance, uh, relative to storing hazardous substances at the landfill. Uh, those are illegal under the current state statutes, um, so that we just need to repeal those from, from the books so that when Kelly and Tammy codify our new ordinance book, we don't have, have that in there. And the second one is the criminal background check on Macon Bounty employees. There, we, Kelly came across a old ordinance that suggested that there was a criminal background check, but it, it's different for sheriff employees versus county employees, and it had to do with finger pitting. And so that one was in conflict with other ordinances, if I'm not, if I'm not incorrect. Um, and so that one's in, um, obsolete. And so if we could just repeal both of those ordinances, that would help to clean that issue up.
Motion, motion to repeal both ordinances.
Second. I mean, is there a second?
You did. Second.
Antoine got me covered. Any further discussion? Not all in agreement. I don't know how you're supposed to do this, I don't say those words. Anything else, Mr. Ryan?
Uh, so we move on to 11, uh, did we vote on that one, we're good?
E.
Yeah, so moving on to 11E, that is in furtherance of what we just talked about in 11D, where we need the personnel policy to, um, to be updated, and I believe that's in your packet. And I will let Kelly or Tammy, uh, speak as to that issue.
Earn your money, Kelly.
So, that was in your handout, so basically our background check policy and the person, and the current personnel policy was one sentence that said all employees needed to have background checks. So we have expanded that to include what we are actually doing. So that's all that is, is a procedural, um, change for that policy for what we are actually doing, that employees get a criminal background check before they're hired. And in some departments and areas, they may also be required to go through the fingerprinting process.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, same sign. Lock and rope. Let's see.
E.
Is this, um... Have a mission?
No, I'm just, I'm just passing through.
All right. Uh, Mr. Higginson, I've got a F.
11F, we remove, Mr. Chairman.
I was gonna say, I've got a circle.
Yes, sir, we're on 11G. Yes, sir, that would be me. All I'm asking for is approval of a formal bid for $107,733 for Vans Electric to do the replacement of the uninterruptible power supply or the UPS system for the Barrett Building, which powers the 911 system. What it does is it catches that building, if the generator doesn't crank, the existing UPS only will hold it for about 10 minutes. It'll cost more to replace the batteries than it would to upgrade. And now, by North Carolina guidelines, our UPS is supposed to self-monitor. So, $107,733 will get us compliant, will give us about two hours of hold time, and the money is already in our budget, it's a 911 funded item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All the same sign. Thank you, Mr. King. Uh, see, um... Do we?
Well, no, the, um...
We can roll up a can of worms.
11H, I mean, no, the can of worms has been opened up with, um...
I know, but it's a mess.
Well, no, I mean, all I'm asking for is, um, if this board agrees to, um, let's just task the, um, Planning Board at doing some homework and see if this is even...
Feasible?
Feasible, to, um, to even consider the Lake Emory Dam. And I'm not saying let's go, uh, remove the dam next month, but in January, we are going to be talking about this floodplain, and you wanna have an impact on the floodplain, it's the removal of that dam. And, um, so, I mean, we've, we're divided here, uh, and so on, um, whether we want to fill the floodplain, we don't wanna fill it, we don't wanna do this. But the real results will be with that consideration of removal of that dam, and the Planning Board should be tasked with that.
100% agree.
That a motion?
I make a motion that we test.
Second.
All right.
And that would be a comprehensive feasibility study. Maybe one way to term that, is, is it feasible?
Right.
So, a second to motion.
Any further discussion?
I'm, I'm good.
You'll take care of that.
I will, I will send that to them if y'all approve that.
All in agreement, raise your hand. If you disagree, same sign. Five vote.
Motion to approve consent agenda unless items need to be tackled individually.
Second, but I wanted to ask about I. Is this forgiven, or are we proceeding foreclosure? What's, what's the deal with I on a consent agenda?
But we're, he was here, if you missed him.
I.
Tenure passed due.
That's Abby's deal. I think this is a normal thing by general statute, once it's passed 10 years, we write off every year that year. So, again, this is Abby's area, not mine. But I think this is on the agenda every year, too.
Ten.
No, I would, um, when it, I, I think that maybe we should mention something about, um, the agenda item 12C.
Proven.
12C.
And Mr. Langley, Officer Langley's here, in years of service. So, I would, I would, I was questioning whether the board wanted to recognize, um, Officer Langley on, on 12C as, and separate that from the, uh...
You know what?
As an issue, yes, John, there we go.
We have a motion to second on the floor, I guess we'll retract that. Motion, right?
Yeah, we can, as long as, I was just seeing if you guys...
Give him his gun, send him home.
We got a motion.
Well, no one on the consent agenda.
Oh.
So, Paul, are you gonna retract your motion, or are you...
On the consent agenda, Paul is gonna retract your motion. Did you make a motion to, to approve the consent agenda as is?
Unless somebody wanna take out an individual item, so y'all take out an individual item. Call it. Call a question on that, on that item.
It's gone anyways, it's just called a question.
Where'd Mr. Langley go?
He just walked on out.
He said you were taking too long.
Mr. Chairman, let, let me add the one thing on the tax question, you had the $38,144. There was a, uh, some information in your packet. Practice that North Carolina tax collection staff be relieved of collecting any tax counts are minimum of 10 years old, so that is correct. That's what those dollar figures were, so that is correct.
And I think we've had to do this previously, too.
Yeah, every year it's on the agenda, yeah.
Well, how, how is that even possible for, I mean, shoot, I don't pay my taxes, they come and take what I have. I mean, how do you get a tax bill?
I, I can answer that, there can be, uh, let's say there's a $5,000 piece of property that has not been probated, not been handed down, not been deeded in 70 years, and it's now owned by 64 different cousins. To do the research to figure out who owns that, to then to foreclose upon it, to then put it back on the tax rolls, is ultimately gonna be a, it costs way more money than it is, whatever tax benefit we're gonna get by fixing it. So, yeah, it would be nice to get all those fixed out, but inevitably, 10 years is going to pass on stuff that is not worth pursuing. And so this just happens every year. It's, on the, under the statute, it's, they're forgiven after 10 years, so I'm not... I don't, this must just be an internal thing that, that, uh, Abby is requesting just to clear her books, but the fact of the matter is, by law, they automatically terminate.
All right.
So, did we get the consent agenda? There's a motion in the second.
I made a motion, we got a second, we need a vote called a vote.
For the consent agenda?
Yeah, mhm. All in favor?
What about the ones that were discussed?
We already discussed.
We already discussed.
We're good.
Request a vote, favor of the consent agenda, unacceptable, raise your right hand. All opposed?
Motion, so, Paul says yes.
Paul is gone.
Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing? One, one thing that I wanna, what we were trying to get at with Officer Langley's service weapon, uh, and he stepped out. But that, that's a small token of our appreciation for the years of service that he has, has put into this county. And, and that's, that's what the board wanted to relay to him, that's what we were trying to get across to him. But we appreciate his service and the years that, that he has actually put in with his agency.
Is Mr. Langley close by?
Yeah.
He, he probably doesn't want the attention more than likely.
I think he wants to get an invitation, though.
A long time.
Don't come in here shooting.
That's what I was saying, you can run, but you can't hide.
So, Mike, I was, I was actually talking, I was talking about you when you left. Uh, what, what we wanted to, to basically say was, the, the issuance or allowing the, the surplus of your duty weapon for you is, is a small token of our appreciation on behalf of the county for the years of service that, that you have put into this, this agency in this county. So that's from us to you, we appreciate your service, appreciate the years you put in, the time you've been here and, and everything you've done for us over the years. How many years, how many?
Twenty-one.
Mr. Langley?
Thank you, Mike.
Tell them the rest of the story, the invitation.
Tell them what?
The rest of the story.
My wife is having a little party because her family members from Virginia are coming down a couple weeks before I actually retire. But then, Friday the 13th of December will be my last day.
And do you have a, a reception or something on that day?
Yeah, they're gonna have a little cake and stuff back here.
Yeah, we have a reception on the 13th, but also his wife is having one at Kelly, that is church on the 13th.
And I believe you've invited us, right?
Yes, sir. Everybody's invited, come on down.
We're talking to Kelly, the Kelly Church.
Kelly Baptist Church, November 29th, it's the day after Thanksgiving.
What time?
4:07.
4:07.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, anything else we need to?
I have one quick announcement for myself, I will be out of town from Friday, through Friday. I'll be back in town Monday, Tuesday, before Thanksgiving, and then I'll be gone to visit family that weekend. So if you need me, please get in touch with me this week.
We'll write you later. Telegram or something. Anything else we need to discuss?
Need to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
No appointments, no closed session, and adjourn?
How will you?
Lock and roll. All right, adjourn.
You got a vote?
No.
All in favor of adjournment? Let's get out of here.
I didn't know you called.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
I said, we gotta vote.
Okay.
No, no, hey, everybody, let's go.
Oh, absolutely.